Good evening, everyone. Se go ani buju endio wachia kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will officially call to order. Mr Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, we have quorum. In attendance from council, in addition to yourself, are councillor Doherty, councillor Hill, councillor Holland, councillor Bohm, councillor Hutchison, councillor Kylie, councillor McLaren, councillor Neil, councillor Oosterhoff, councillor Rosanik, and councillor Stroud. In attendance from staff are Lanny Hurdle, Chief Administrative Officer, Pajag New Commissioner, Community Services, Peter Huguenbos, Commissioner, Business, Environment and Projects, Brad Joyce, Commissioner, Transportation and Public Works, Desiree Kennedy, Chief Financial Officer and City Treasurer, John Bolignone, City Clerk, Jeff Bumstead, Chief Information Officer, Lana Folds, Director, Financial Services, Spiros Kanelos, Director, Facilities Management and Construction, Jenna Morley, Director, Legal Services and City Solicitor, Ruth Nordgraf, Director, Housing and Social Services, Tim Park, Director, Planning Services, Brent Funnel, Manager, Procurement, Alan MacLeod, Deputy City Solicitor, Julie Seltzer Keen, Manager, Climate Leadership, Elizabeth Fawcett, Committee Clerk, Derek O'Shea, Acting Deputy City Clerk, Marcus Legacy is the Technology Associate. Also in attendance are Bruce Davis, Project Manager, Community Services, and Andrew Resin, Associate Legal Counsel.
Okay, thank you very much. We were meeting in committee, the whole closed meeting, we discussed one item with respect to Ontario Land Tribunal Matters. So I will ask for a motion that we waive our procedural rules and have the clerk report.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Hutchison, that council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting that the rules of bylaw number 2021-41 be waived and the city clerk report.
All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Hutchison, that council direct the city solicitor to include the following explanation for refusal of the zoning bylaw and official planned amendment applications for Two River Street and Fifty Orchard Street in the notice of decision pursuant to the Planning Act. Whereas at the August 4th, 2022 Planning Committee meeting, report number PC 22031 was not approved, and whereas report PC 22031 was comprised of a bylaw to amend the City of Kingston Official Plan, Amendment Number 77, Two River Street and Fifty Orchard Street, and a bylaw to amend bylaw number 8499, Restricted Area Zoning Bylaw of the Corporation of the City of Kingston. And whereas the city's planning staff's technical recommendation comes with a particular balance of planning principles, and it is city council's responsibility to determine if the proposed balance of good, but often contrary, planning principles has achieved a reasonable and good balance of those principles in the public interest in any particular application. And whereas the Planning Act in section 2.11 states, "When an approval authority or the tribunal makes a decision under this act that relates to a planning matter, it shall have regard to a) any decision that is made under this act by municipal council." And whereas it is incumbent on any authority to give reasons for its decision. And whereas the Planning Act in section 2 says, "The council of a municipality, in carrying out their responsibilities under this act, shall have regard to, among other matters, matters of provincial interest," and then lists 22 items of regard to balance. And whereas the provincial policy statement with its 16 equal and fundamental principles gives direction that these principles must be balanced as reasonably close to equally in any land use application. And whereas the official plan, "A statement of how citizens want to see their city develop with its 10 fundamental principles of prime significance, is found in section 2 of the OP, which gives strategic intent but must also properly balance to reflect the values of the community." And whereas the rejection of a staff recommendation to council requires a proper planning rationale. Therefore be it resolved that council finds the proposed balance of planning principles to be unreasonably weighted in favour of some principles, and that not enough weight was given to other good planning principles. And that the following are one, the points of concern with the proposed bylaw changes as they relate to the proposed balance of principles; two, the identified misbalance of good planning principles; and three, the direction of the rebalancing that would, in council's view, better balance the good planning principles found in the PA, PPS, and OP. That concerning the proposed changes to both of the bylaws below, regard for PA 2J and PA 2K has been overwhelming to the point of neglecting regard for PA 2A, PA 2E, PAO, and PAS. The environmental interests of the province have been unregarded. An application that gives more regard to protection of ecological systems, water, safety, and better mitigates and adapts to climate change would have a better balance of regard in the public good. And that concerning the bylaw to amend the City of Kingston Official Plan, one, on the proposed amendment to Official Plan Schedule 3A, the lands to be re-designated residential from their current designation, environmental protection areas. From the perspective of the PA, the proposal regards 2J and 2K disproportionately. From the perspective of the PPS, the proposal gives too much weight to PPS 1.4 at the expense of four other principles, PPS 1.5, PPS 1.8, PPS 2.1, and PPS 2.2. A redesigned building and proposal that would better protect the environmental protection area would, in council's view, better equalise the balance of competing PPS principles for the public good. From the perspective of the Kingston OP, the proposal gives an inordinate amount of weight to OP 2.9 and seriously undervalues the three principal intentions, OP 2.1 and its goal to protect and conserve natural resources, OP 2.8 and its goal to improve the natural heritage system, and OP 2.1.0 and its goal to improve resiliency by managing risk of natural hazards. A redesigned proposal that better recognises the value of natural heritage and the risk of natural hazards in the proposed re-designated EPA land would better balance the competing intentions of the OP for the public good. Two, on the proposed amendment to OP Schedule 7A, adjusting the boundary of the provincially significant wetland and riparian corridor. From the perspective of the PPS, the proposal gives more weight to PPS 1.4 at the expense of PPS 1.5, PPS 1.8, PPS 2.1, and PPS 2.2. A redesigned proposal that would alter less of the provincially significant wetland and riparian corridor would generate a more equal balance that the competing PPS's principles for the public good. From the perspective of the Kingston OP, the proposal also gives an inordinate amount of weight to OP 2.9 and seriously undervalues three principal intentions, OP 2.1 and its goal to protect and conserve natural resources, OP 2.8 and its goal to improve the natural heritage system, and OP 2.1.0 and its goal to improve resiliency by managing risk of natural hazards. A redesigned proposal that better recognises the environmental and social value of wetland and riparian corridors relative to the value of economic development in the proposed re-designated land would better balance the competing intentions of the OP policies for the public good. On the proposed amendment to the Official Plan Schedule 8A, adjusting the boundary of the significant woodland, from the perspective of the PPS, the proposal gives too much weight to two principles, PPS 1.3 and PPS 1.4 at the expense of three principles, PPS 1.5, PPS 1.8, and PPS 2.1. A more equally balanced proposal would protect a greater portion of the significant woodland and/or make room for significantly more trees throughout the development, and would better equalise the balance of competing PPS principles for the public good. From the perspective of the Kingston Official Plan, the proposal further gives an inordinate amount of weight to OP 2.9 and seriously undervalues three of other principal intentions, OP 2.1 and its goal to protect and conserve natural resources, OP 2.8 and its goal to improve the natural heritage system, OP 2.1.0 and its goal to improve resiliency by managing risks of natural hazards. A redesigned proposal that intentionally better recognises the environmental and social value of trees and significant woodlands relative to the value of economic development in the proposed re-designated land would better balance the competing OP intentions for the public good. Four, on the proposed amendment to Official Plan Schedule 11A, adjusting the boundary of the natural hazard area by simply redefining it away. From the perspective of the PPS, the proposal gives far too much weight to PPS 1.4 at the expense of at least three principles, PPS 1.1, PPS 1.6, PPS 1.7. Simply redefining a natural hazard area does not mitigate the reality of that hazard and its possible effects on economic prosperity, infrastructure, and general resiliency. A redesign that better protects public and private property without ignoring or redefining away a natural hazard would better balance the competing PPS principles for the public good. From the perspective of the Kingston OP, the proposal gives excessive weight to aspects of two principles while minimising other aspects of the same principles. Firstly, the principle of growth that is attractive, accessible, safe, and sustainable, which protects our cultural resources, OP 2.3, has the over-emphasised goal of growth that is diverse, attractive, accessible, and provides variety of housing options, but jettisons the goal of safe growth in the sense of insisting that the first set of goals be built on the portions of a natural hazard which is potentially unsafe. Secondly, the principle of economic development within compatible development, OP 2.9, over-emphasises its goal of supporting a strong economic base, but jettisons the second half of the goal to do so without generating adverse effects, such as what could be caused by a major natural hazard event, for example, injury or damage to property, harm or mental discomfort to any person, an impairment of the safety of any person, rendering any property unfit for human use, the loss of enjoyment of the property, and interference with the normal conduct of business. Due to the increased danger that exists, natural hazards posed to buildings and development, and due to the expected increased danger of various natural hazards caused by climate change, the proposal as presented does not give enough weight to two principles of the, uh, two principles, OP 2.4 and its goal of sustaining the city's long-term financial wellbeing. The principle is not properly valued by building on an existing natural hazard regardless of whether or not it is redefined or not. Furthermore, the principle, OP 2.1.0, and its goal to improve the resiliency of the community by managing the risks associated with natural and human-made hazards and climate change, in order to protect public health and safety, property, and long-term prosperity, is not supported by a simple redefining of natural hazard area. A redesigned proposal that better recognises the environmental and social danger posed by natural hazard areas due to climate change would better balance the competing OP policies for the public good. And finally, that concerning the bylaw to amend bylaw number 8499 of the Corporation of the City in Kingston entitled Restricted Area Zoning Bylaw of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, one, the proposed bylaw section 1.2F1 concerning the removal of the holding symbol, given firstly that the federal government is going to clean up the polluted water while to budding the property, and given secondly that there are at least three streams leading into the property, and given thirdly that the property is designated a brownfield, and given fourthly that stormwater management controls the quantity and quality of surface runoff, and given lastly that these streams may be contributing to moving contaminants from the property into the river in other forms than just runoff. From the perspective of the provincial policy statement, inadequate consideration was given to two principles, PPS 2.1 and PPS 2.2. The proposed application lands should not have their holding symbol removed until a qualified independent hydrogeologist or other relevant professional has determined that there are sufficient controls to prevent repollution of the river or negative impacts to the river from the property through any form of groundwater flow to the satisfaction of the city. From the perspective of the official plan, the lack of protection for the river from the possibility of repollution neglects the principal intensive OP 2.1 and its articulated emphasis on strategies to attain the sustainability of development, including conserving natural resources, reducing pollution, and rehabilitating, rehabilitating polluted areas. The proposed application lands should not have their holding symbol removed until the record of site conditions and the issuance of a certificate of property use includes controls to prevent repollution of the river or negative impacts to the river from the property to the satisfaction of the city.
Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favour? Opposed? That carries by a vote of eight to five. Myself, councillor Oosterhoff, councillor Kylie, councillor Hill, and councillor Bohm opposed. Okay, moving on to the approval of the addits, we have three sets of addits, we will approve them as one. On our first added, we have a couple of additional delegations and a report from Planning Committee. We also have a motion of condolence, and a number of miscellaneous business, and a number of communications. Can I have a mover and a second for the addits? Moved by Deputy Mayor Neil, seconded by councillor Kylie. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Doherty?
I, councillor Doherty of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare an indirect pecuniary interest in report number 82, item 5, received from the CEO, and report 84, item 1, received from the Planning Committee, because I'm a director of the Providence Centre for Justice, Peace, and Integrity of Croatia, which is an operating division of the Catholic Health Sponsors of Ontario.
Thank you, councillor Kylie.
I, Robert Kylie of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my potential pecuniary, pecuniary interest in report number 82, and report number 85 from the Planning Committee, as I have immediate family in senior leadership at Providence Manor.
Thank you, councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I, Ryan Bohm, the councillor of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause four, report 81. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have conflict with report 81, clause four, insofar as it may relate to Utilities Kingston. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other delegations, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have several delegations. So first, I will invite Laurie French to appear before council to speak to clause five of report number 82 from the Chief Administrative Officer with respect to the Providence Manor redevelopment. Just a note to all of our delegations, that you have up to five minutes to speak, and then I will open up the floor to questions from members of council. Ms French, welcome, and you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Patterson, councillors, staff, and to all of those who are gathered here tonight. I am most pleased to address you about some of the exciting community partnerships that Providence Village Incorporated is undertaking in the city that includes the potential redevelopment of the current Providence Manor complex. I am speaking as president and CEO of the Providence Village Incorporated on behalf of the Board of Directors. I was proud to join them in April of this year. So this visual shows you the updated master plan for Providence Village that's located at 1200 Princess Street. It includes 36 acres of the Sisters of Providence of St Vincent de Paul motherhouse property. The village is a not-for-profit charitable organisation that was established five years ago by the sisters to ensure the lasting legacy of caring for some of Kingston's most vulnerable citizens well into the future. Tonight, we have two projects before council. The first is a recommendation from the Planning Committee for rezoning at 1200 Princess Street to support the build of the new expanded long-term care home by Providence Care Hospital on the village property. We are very excited to host this project in the village that will not only update existing beds, but add much-needed new long-term care home beds to the region. The bylaw amendment to support the Providence Manor build within the village, along with the parking garage structure, is a critical step in that process. However, once this new long-term care home is opened, the existing site for Providence Manor on Sidnum Street, which is currently owned by the sisters, will be vacated. The Sisters of Providence of St Vincent de Paul, through Providence Village, are examining options for the property bounded by Sidnum, Bay, Montreal, and Ordnance Streets to avoid a vacant building and to further the vision of Providence Village in the downtown. In 2019, the sisters' leadership team created a vision, mission, and guiding statements for the idea of adaptive reuse of the property, and named it Providence Commons. The sisters would like to see that site address gaps in housing and community needs in the downtown Kingston area. Providence Village, PVI, is advancing this exploratory work on behalf of the sisters in partnership with a lead consultant. The initial feasibility study that we conducted confirmed there is value in further studying the development models and potential partners for this site. We have spent a lot of time speaking with interested parties, including the Kingstown Affordable Housing Working Group, now named the Friends and Neighbours of Providence Commons, along with several potential development and service partners. And while the pandemic paused this work, it has definitely impacted project costing, and further study is needed. There is a narrow window of time until the new long-term care home opens to confirm feasibility of the opportunity that would extend Providence Village to the Providence Commons property in a unique way. The site includes 220,000 square feet, long-term care home space, a beautiful historic chapel, the sisters' foundation house, a commercial kitchen, and encompasses the entire block with access on four streets. The initial study suggested the site may provide significant housing potential, estimated at over 180 units, plus other community-use spaces. If feasibility is proven, for the PVI board to proceed with next steps in this feasibility work, we will still need substantial creativity and capital to bring this opportunity to life. So tonight, we are seeking support of council for the next phase of feasibility work, to develop the community vision for the Providence Manor site as a community hub with a focus on providing a mix of affordable and market rental housing and complementary community services, along with city funding to prepare the applications and conduct the next phase of feasibility studies to support this unique business model. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Hill?
Thank you. Just a couple of things, actually. First of all, congratulations. As always, the Sisters of Providence step up for this community, and it's tremendous to see. This is strictly a feasibility study, though. You're looking at the possibility of doing this, we're not looking for approvals in terms of planning or anything like that. This is just strictly a feasibility study to see if this is a project that could be entertained in the city.
That is correct. Thank you for clarifying. It's most important that we are clear. We need to manage expectations. This is a feasibility study, but we're very hopeful it will prove out.
Great, that's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Hutchison.
Thank you. Following up on that question, so tonight you're looking for support in principle, followed by a feasibility study, then we'll see what's possible, correct?
That's correct. The support in principle is important at this time, to know that we have your support to go forward with this work, and the contribution of a financial component to that feasibility work would be most appreciated.
Thank you. Also, follow-up question, could you clarify the distinction between Providence Village, which I think is the owner, and Providence Manor?
Yes, happy to, thank you. Providence Manor operates presently on the downtown property that I described. Providence Village is the incorporated organisation that was established by the Sisters of Providence on the 1200 Princess Street property. So our Board of Directors is distinct, we're distinct from Providence Care Hospital as well, and that's an important consideration, as Providence Care Hospital will build the new long-term care home and hospice Kingston in the village on our property. So we're very happy to host those projects, but we are the landlord. I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Ms French, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
With that, we'll move to our second delegation. Greg Tilson from the Kingstown Affordable Housing Working Group will appear before council to speak to clause five of report number 82 from the CAO with respect to the Providence Manor redevelopment. Mr Tilson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, members of the council. It's nice to see you all in person. I'm here, also thank you to Laurie for an informative and inspiring presentation. As mentioned, I'm here on behalf of an affordable housing working group, which I co-chair, also of whom several members are in attendance this evening, and we are in support of Providence Village's proposal and the opportunities it presents to repurpose Providence Manor on Sidnum Street. And with the help of the city, as per report 82 clause five, we think there's great potential to create a vital hub of affordable housing and community service. Our group has been meeting for several years to help explore a vision for the future of Providence Manor. Several of us live in the immediate neighbourhood, including myself, I'm the artistic director of the Skeleton Park Arts Festival, I also sit on the McBurney Park Neighbourhood Association and the city's North Kingstown Project Committee. Other neighbourhood working group members include current, the current president of the McBurney Park Neighbourhood Association, and another co-founder, a prominent architect who lives nearby the Providence Manor, a lawyer participating, practicing in the neighbourhood, a former, and the former general superior of Sisters of Providence. Our members also include a senior executive of St Lawrence College, a veteran city planner, two former mayors, one of whom is also a former provincial minister of housing and municipal affairs. So needless to say, it's, it's an honour for me to, to work with such experienced and talented people who are so invested in our community. Now with regards to Providence Manor, our group submitted our initial what-if document to the Sisters of Providence back before the pandemic, and we called it a bold vision, noting that Kingston's 2016 North Kingstown Secondary Plan had revealed that over 70% of the area residents earn less than Kingston's median income. Kingston's need for rent geared-to-income housing is pressing and desperate. Of course, everyone knows this. The proposal by Providence Village Incorporated to consider repurposing Providence Manor and the transition from Providence Commons offers a unique opportunity within North Kingstown. This is where some of the poorest citizens live, and together with working-class people living in unaffordable private sector apartments. Again, our group is in support of the Providence Commons proposal and dedicated to help explore the viability of reinventing Providence Manor. We have been in dialogue with representatives from the Sisters of Providence for the past two and a half years, exploring with them the potential reuse of Providence Manor building once the long-term care home moves to its new location in Providence Village at 1200 Princess Street. Now, we are under no illusion that repurposing Providence Manor would in any way be straightforward. Consultation, design, planning, financing approvals, and compliance are complex and time-consuming, as you all well know, and we envision a participatory process, engaging many interested parties, including people living with less, at the earliest stages. Such a socially inclusive process could engage neighbours, prospective residents, of course, city officials, interested community groups, consultants, and developers. This will require a coalition of organisations and people who recognise the urgency of the housing crisis and are committed to do something about it. Our working group is motivated to help explore the possibilities presented by this property in the heart of one of city's oldest neighbourhoods. The district is an ideal location for rent geared-to-income affordable housing. A successful multi-generational housing project would serve the needs of people differing in ages and circumstances. It would also avoid the stigma of being a low-income quote-unquote ghetto by building a community hub for affordable housing and services with rent geared-to-income and market-rate units. The project could serve as a model and a catalyst for other projects of this nature in Kingston. So again, we endorse this bold vision by Providence Village Board of Directors that they are exploring, a vision to engage community partners in housing and social programming, reflect the diverse composition of the Skeleton Park community, include market rental accommodations and rent geared-to-income affordable housing so desperately needed in Kingston. And it constitutes a unique and powerful opportunity to bring together a coalition of housing advocates and experts to address one of our city's most urgent needs. In conclusion, we hope that our support will assist in moving this critically important initiative forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Deputy Mayor Neil?
Hello, Greg.
Hello.
I think it's been three years of COVID, I haven't seen you in some time, it's great to see you again. A couple of things. Have you, what kind of time, ideal timeframe do you have in mind, when do you think, and I know wrenches get thrown into these plans all the time, but ideally, when do you think there would be housing available on-site?
Well, I can't really speak to that. That's a matter that relates to Providence Village and the construction taking place there. I think all I can speak to is that we're in support of the vision and what's before council, just to support in principle, and of course, the funding for a feasibility study, that's the next step that we're focused on right now. But I think we just want council to know, and Providence Village, that there's a strong neighbourhood and community working group that's ready to help with that work.
I'm sure, I know that neighbourhood well, and I'm sure they're very supportive. Have you had an opportunity to kind of sit down and talk to the city housing group, or CMHC, or, or am I getting too, too far ahead in your planning process?
Well, again, I'm afraid that's something that is more in the hands of Providence Village, and Laurie has done some of that work, and has been meeting with our group to report back accordingly. And so I think definitely a lot of those things that you mentioned are kind of in place and ready, depending on council's decision on how we move forward supporting the project.
This is a, this is a great project, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the delegation? Councillor Hutchison?
I was just wondering if you could clarify how you see the working group support Providence Manor, Providence Commons moving forward?
Yeah, good question, thank you councillor Hutchison. I think our strength lies in the network that I mentioned of who's sitting on the working group. It's, it's a very engaged group in our committee, very experienced, and perhaps most importantly, we're very, as councillor Neil indicated, we're very connected to the neighbourhood. So I think as we move forward, helping to inform the neighbourhood, which, which we are already doing through a neighbourhood newspaper called the Skeleton Press, and among other ways, I think that that community consultation is going to be really helpful to move the project forward in a way that informs the neighbourhood, the surrounding community. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thanks very much.
Okay, if there are no other questions, Mr Tilson, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll maybe- And with that, we'll move to our third delegation. We'll invite Mark Greenwood from Amy's Taxi and Brian Campbell from Modern City Taxi to appear before council to speak to clause one, report number eighty-three received from the CAO with respect to options for Kingston and Area Taxi Commission. Yep. Okay, we see Mr. Greenwood is there. Okay, Mr. Greenwood is here, so I think we can proceed. And if Mr. Campbell joins in, then we can always include him later. So, Mr. Greenwood, welcome, and I will pass the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to the mayor and city council and the city staff attending. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. We're speaking on the report number twenty-two dash two four one regarding the Kingston Area Taxi Commission. I'd first like to start off by explaining why the taxi commission existed in the first place. Before amalgamation of the city, there was Pittsburgh Township, Kingston Township, Ernestown, Amherstview, and the city of Kingston. All had their own bylaws and all had, for example, Pittsburgh didn't have any bylaws. And it was, it was a mess both for the customers and for the taxi operators because everyone was operating under different, different rules. So they created this, and they created it in four municipalities that were all having similar problems. So it was separate from the city. It was separate from the other areas of the city at that time. Once amalgamation occurred, the real reason for the Kingston Area Taxi Commission didn't exist anymore. We still have Loyalist and the city of Kingston, the two remaining. From my understanding, according to the report, that Loyalist wants to work with the city on this. So that was the main reason for the amalgamation, for having the Kingston Area Taxi Commission. The Kingston Area Taxi Commission can work well at times and cannot work well at times. It's all volunteer committees, so it's like Forrest Gump. We never know what chocolate we're going to get from the box every year. And I think as the second largest transportation in the Kingston, in the city of Kingston, besides public transit, that it's time that it's spent to be professionally managed and to have some consistency from year to year and to keep as, and to manage as a professional body. Therefore, we support, and I support, I'll let Brian speak after me, option number two of the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll let Brian speak now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just confirming is, oh, oh, there he is.
Sorry, I'm, sorry. You want to talk to me?
No, no, that's fine. I just, I didn't know that you were both in the same room, and so I, it was kind of freaky, actually. So, okay. Okay, Mr. Campbell, welcome, and you have the floor.
Just to make it simple, we're the same geographic location. I just wanted to thank Councilor Hutchinson, who brought this motion forward a number of months ago. It was brought to the city that we would look for options going forward to what would best be the best tool going forward for the industry. Mr. Greenwood has gone over many of the points that, of the history and how we arrived here. We feel at Modern City Taxi that time has come. We just want to be treated as the other municipalities of similar size and similar dynamics involved, population demographics. And none of them have a taxi commission. They all come under an umbrella or branch of the corporation of the municipality that they're associated with. So we look forward to councilor's support with this report. We believe it's the way to go forward, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Schraub?
Thank you for your presentation. Either of you can answer or both to, to my question. It has to do with the sort of democratic representation of the taxi commission. Do you, are you confident that your, this option two that you prefer that's suggested in the report would offer the same representation from members of the community as the current taxi commission does? That's one of the features of the taxi commission, is that it's, it's an appointed body of community members that is the governing body, and, and are you, are you comfortable that the, that option two would continue this, this civilian oversight function?
I'm not sure if the word civilian oversight. Part of the problem and why we want to bring it under the umbrella of the city of Kingston is, is the lack of accountability. For all intents purposes, right now, the taxi commission is its own independent island, and we felt in the industry, we didn't have, there was no tools, there's no tools for us to bring balance and fairness going forward. So if it came under the corporation city Kingston, we believe that there would be other tools that are available should events come arise that need to be addressed.
Okay, but from the point of view of, of having members of the community on the taxi commission, as we now have in the position, you know, presumably of impartial oversight from people that are affected, you know, by, by what the taxi commission does, is this function carried forward with option two?
I'm not, I didn't see it in the present literature, but I'm sure there could be amendments to it to accommodate some balance from the, from the public. Mr. Greenwood? Here, I'll, I'll let Mark address that, too. Can you ask the question, Sean? The representation from the public.
Oh, okay. I think that the representation from the public, it's selected by the select committee, as you know. And the select committee has a very difficult job. They only get, maybe we get seven resumes for three positions. And they have to determine from those resumes who would be best to serve on, as the public sector. The problem is, is that when the commission was set up originally, there was Pittsburgh Township, there was Loyalist and City of Kingston. So there was actually, I think, four councillors on this. And then there was some members from the public. Now, the members of the public outnumber the councillors. So it's, but they're, they're not necessarily, when we have meetings and stuff like that, and they make bylaws, and they make changes, especially to important things like fairs and stuff like that, they, they release through media, releases through the paper, whatever, or social media that this bylaw is coming up. I know that our, this is changing. If, you know, if you have any comments, please let us know. I think the city has, has a similar thing when they, when they propose things, that they say, you know, please comment if you'd like this proposal's up. So I'm sure that it could be accommodated within, within the framework. And I think that the city already has something that exists similar to this already.
Okay, next is Councilor Schraub.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you for your presentations tonight. And the reason I appreciate it is that I see and hear you as a voice of your industry. And, and the question I have for you tonight is, if you're speaking and asking this, I find it a little bit unusual that we would go this way as an industry request. And, and clarify it to me if I'm wrong, is, is it feels like a bit of a cry for help? And I'm wondering if you would categorize it that way in the sense that, you know, the, the commission has run its course and that you need, you need a new start? Is that what you're asking?
It's somewhat that. The, the, the commission itself, as you know, it's elected every year. I think the maximum term is, I forget, five years. And so in the last few years, we've had, I guess, a real antagonistic relationship with the taxi mission. And we've, you know, contacted the province, the abudsmen, et cetera, and lawyers and stuff like that over certain issues. And the province told us, no, it's a city problem, called the city clerk. And then the city said, no, it's a provincial problem. So there seems to be no oversight or no, no recourse to decisions. So that's an issue if we get in. Yeah, so that, that is an issue. So with the city, we would have recourse. We'd have recourse through council. We'd have recourse by the city clerk, but no one really wants to take, this is, this has been in place for thirty-some years. No one even knows it exists, I don't think, in the province. And there's no recourse. So it's really a country onto itself, and there's no recourse to any actions. Now, the commission has worked well in the past, and in the last five or six months, it's, it's worked very well. We've, we've been, it's been very productive. But I guess what we're looking for is, is more consistency that, you know, we know that our world's not going to be turned upside down every year, or every two years, or every three years. We know that, you know, this is a more stable environment. We've had to deal with, you know, the pandemic, and we're still dealing with getting, you know, our cars back on, and we're still, you know, coming out of this. So it's good to have stability in, in this one area where if it's unstable, it's just, they just asked the instill unstability of the whole industry. So yes, it is kind of a, a cry for help in one way, that we would like some, to bring some stability and consistency to, to the management body of the, of the taxi industry.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from council? Okay, Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Campbell, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we do have two additional delegations that would require motions of council to add. So first, moved by Councilor McLaren, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that clauses twelve point nine and twelve point eleven of our procedural bylaw be waived to allow Gordon Stensel to speak to council with respect to the options for the Kingston Area Taxi Commission. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. And the next move by Councilor McLaren, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that again clauses twelve point nine and twelve point eleven of our procedural law bylaw be waived to allow Joseph Dowzer, Chair of the Kingston and Area Taxi Commission, to also to speak to council with respect to options for the Kingston Area Taxi Commission. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, so with that, with those two additional delegations, at this point, I will invite Gordon Stensel to appear before council. And again, this is with respect to options for the Kingston Area Taxi Commission. Mr. Stensel, welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Hello, council. Thank you for having me. I was approached by a very sincere and earnest Kingston Area Taxi Commission, wanting to change its course and its historical course. They wanted support to set strategic priorities, improve transparency and access, and as well commissioner of cooperation toward stability for all of its partners. Based on its history, it felt it needed to make some important wins and really seek some guidance. It was my pleasure to work with them. And I undertook interviews with staff, developed a survey for commissioners and staff so they could have further input. I did an analysis, and I used those insights to facilitate the strategic planning session where priorities were set, and it was, you know, quite an aggressive agenda, but they were diligent in making sure that it was aligned with their mandate and that it would touch many stakeholders. So they felt in agreement about what they had prioritized in the sequence of those priorities. I felt hopeful for them, you know, it's, again, as the brokers had said, it's been a challenging time with the pandemic. So I provided coaching to the chair about how meetings were conducted and feedback so that they became more open, more proactive, less reactive, a little less spirited sometimes amongst all stakeholders and participants, to really provide that leadership, and I'm delighted to hear some of that reflected from the brokers. Now, when you undertake that amount of change, particularly maybe when there's been a strain in the relationship, it is going to create a little more strain, a little more friction. We knew that professionalism, teamwork and processes, the introduction of committees, as well as being mindful of their reputation, would be important. Sometimes what happens with organizations, particularly enforcement organizations, be it the National Hockey League or being a school principal perhaps, you're trying to facilitate the, the threads of a relationship and an experience, but at the same time, your enforcement isn't always beloved. So it's not easy, particularly for a group of volunteer commissioners. So they set out to be mindful of that they had to be making decisions based on the present commission, not based on the legacy of experience. Their responsibility to put their best foot forward and really their fiduciary duty to support the present day and future interests of the body that they're a part of. And I believe that that protects such entities from strife, conflict, and toxicity. So I'm, you know, the, the credit to the, to the commission for getting feedback about it being better from the brokers. Sorry, I didn't move my slides along here, but they're very brief and to the point. You know, there's a letter from the secretary and, and chair about how, sorry, secretary and treasurer about how useful it was for everybody, and again, it was my pleasure. So I had a discussion with the chair to answer the following questions. I felt it was important to be here because many organizations say they undertake strategic planning. I wanted to introduce that it was formal and that they feel they're more planful, strategic resulting in delivery of priorities from October twenty-one through October twenty-two, and that CATC has improved transparency and access. As council, their meetings are available online to watch as well, understands its obligations and maintains the rosters of commissioners bound by their duty to serve interests of the commission. And did CATC encounter the strife anticipated with transformation? Was it challenging? And has it been, has it been a worthwhile undertaking? And the answers were all yes. And I'd just like to say, we've seen organizations in our community have someone come up through the ranks, not a direct parallel, but we saw CADCO have a director become interim chair and really guide through a year of transformation. And the Chair Dowzer was a commissioner and got appointed as chair and had, had some success. And I, I hope that with the input from the brokers, which I believe is within the scope of the, the commission to make some changes, I'll suggest to the commission that those are recommendations, maybe about setting terms and providing even greater stability.
Thirty seconds.
The commission felt that it needed to get some wins first, and I know that the other delegation will talk about that. So I'd just like to thank the commission for the opportunity and council for being here to discuss its activities strategically over the last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Okay, say no, Mr. Stensel. Thank you very much. And with that, we will invite our fifth and final delegation. We'll invite Joseph Dowzer, Chair of the Kingston and Area Taxi Commission, to speak to council again with respect to options for the Kingston and Area Taxi Commission. Mr. Dowzer?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the Kingston Area Taxi Commission, to describe some of its recent achievements and to discuss the best path forward. I joined this commission in 2020 in the midst of the uncertainty resulting from the COVID pandemic. That was a very difficult time for our local taxi industry, and I believed that the commission was not doing all it could to support the industry as it rebounded from this crisis. I then became Chair of the commission last year. At that time, we also had some pretty significant staff turnover, which helped create some friction, but also presented an opportunity for institutional renewal. So in the last twelve, in the past twelve months, we have made significant and lasting improvements to the commission's operations. I believe that the commission is better serving the industry and the public's interest than it ever has before. And the changes we've made have been transformational. You know, I read the staff report that's in front of you tonight, and I was disappointed to find that it didn't mention any of these things, so I will. Most basically, we doubled the number of hours that our office is open to serve the members of the industry and the public. To deal with the shortage of operators, we've opened and streamlined our processes so that aspiring cab drivers can complete their application process in a way and at a time that suits them best. To speak frankly, we inherited a decaying management system. Then we totally revolutionized it. a decaying management system. Then we totally revolutionized it. We're currently in the final stages of rolling out to our stakeholders, a state of the art and user-friendly information portal. This will especially help taxi owners and operators who are experiencing health challenges, or who are otherwise unable to attend our office, to stay in compliance. Back in June, we gladly accepted responsibility for overseeing the new TNC bylaw, and we have effectively and efficiently integrated the related task into our general workflow. But I'm particularly proud of the work we've done and are presently doing to support the accessible taxi program. We have made the first substantial revisions to that program since its introduction nine years ago. In the past year, while slightly reducing fees for regular drivers and plateholders, we waived all fees for the renewal of accessible license licenses and taxi licenses. But for the purpose of getting more accessible cabs on the road, we have given them additional flexibility on model year restrictions, and we're proposing to issue partially forgivable loans of $35,000 to their proprietors. I mention this all because the report in front of you does not. If the Taxi Commission were to dissolve both Kingston and Loyalist Township, would need to take the responsibility for administering an accessible taxi program, lest it wilt on the vine. We've been able to make all these new improvements because we've run a sustainable, responsible and lean operation. So I must admit that the city does stand to realize a little windfall from dissolving the Taxi Commission. But I propose instead that we keep our arms-length commission and reinvest these resources in the people and the industry that we serve. I thank you for your time, and I hope you will take this new information under advisement before rendering a decision.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counsel Stroud.
So you listed some accomplishments that your new that your commission has done since you were Chair in the last little while, the transformational changes that the previous speaker also was speaking about. Do you think if you had another period of time to continue on with this renewal, do you think you're confident that you could convince council that the commission is best left at arms length?
And thank you for your question, and through you, your mayor. I absolutely wholeheartedly believe we could. We are, again, we are in the midst of bringing to fruition the final stages of our online platform. This, right now, we are in phase five of that, which allows members to access their personal information, be notified of their license renewals, and pay them online at a convenient time for them. It provides them 24/7 access to support, not only through the commission, but also through our enforcement branch, should they need assistance in a time of peril. Phase six, which is going to be released within the next two to three weeks, will be a direct portal for the public and riders to have full access to the commission and be able to communicate with them directly.
So is part of your disappointment with the report we have in front of us is that one of the options it recommends is is really not giving the new the new efforts to to improve the Taxi Commission a fair chance to finish its work?
I believe so. And sorry, thank you for the question, and through you, your mayor. I believe so. I believe that if the commission were able to finish this strategic plan and hold on to the strategic model, which has brought forward a renewed a renewed commission with hope and prospect, that if we are provided or given the opportunity to display and bring to the community, that our commission would be something that Kingston and surrounding communities will be inspired and proud of.
Okay, next is Counsel Hill.
Thank you, worship. So I'm just looking at what you said. You said that that there was some dysfunction on the commission earlier, that you've come in and tried to make some changes to rectify that. But and I don't know a lot about the taxi industry, but I think Modern and Amy's are probably the two largest carriers in the city, right? So they seem to to think that this isn't working. Do you know what would be behind that?
And thank you for the question, and through you again, your worship. One of the problems is is that, and with all due respect to the brokers, I have a wonderful working relationship with them. I've spoken to Brian Campbell of Modern City in a in a meeting for miscellaneous issues that are facing. I brought them to the floor under motion, and we are currently deliberating on them. I've had great communications with Mark Greenwood, and I was there supporting his one hundredth anniversary. All of this kerfuffle, if I may say, is based upon the past history of the commission. And if I can go back to the conversation that I had with Mr. Greenwood, is as he stated here, his concern is the commission will go back to the way it was. We have put mechanisms in place that will not allow that to happen. Should, for example, in the past, there was a lot of fighting and yelling and screaming and whatnot, but decorum has now been maintained. And if that decorum is broken, that commissioner, of course, since our meetings are virtual, will be put in the waiting room, as I'm sure has happened here before. But, sorry, but as I assured Mr. Greenwood, the executive, there is a clause in our bylaw one, which I am is again, which I am against, and so are many of my fellow commissioners, that gives sort of executive powers to the executive branch to override the commission. I have assured Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Campbell that with new motions in play, that that will be stripped from the bylaw, and will ensure that all communications, all motions and all correspondence goes to the floor for full transparency, full deliberation, full cooperation in a positive manner.
So my my next question is, is this is a fairly unique situation, a Taxi Commission in Kingston. Why isn't that the model around the province? Because my understanding is typically around the province, it is it is overseen by the municipality. Is that correct?
And thank you for your question, and through you, your mayor. If I can clarify, are you asking if there's other commissions in existence, or why should we keep the commission?
I'm saying that this is a unique setup, this commission are fairly unique. So typically, it's overseen by the municipalities. Why? Why do you think if if most municipalities oversee their taxi services, why does Kingston need a commission to do that?
Thank you for the clarification. If I could say, for example, the Taxi Commission in Kingston is is made for Kingston, is by Kingston, and is for Kingston. I believe that by having a Taxi Commission in existence, you have an unbiased committee that is not influenced by political views, or or influenced by mandates that could be moved forward in the future, or that are being considered for future references. I believe that by having an arms-length commission, it allows for a fair and due process of these motions that could be brought forward. For example, if the committee, if the brokers are having an issue with, say, a plate holder, we could assess what would be the best route to ensure that that doesn't happen again. If the public has a complaint or a concern, we can bring it to the brokers and as as a collective whole, put it all together in a relatively short timeframe, ensuring everyone is happy and in compliance.
Okay, next is Deputy Mayor Neal.
In large part, my main question was just answered. But as a follow-up to Counselor Stroud, he mentioned, he asked you if it would be in order to for you to complete your strategic planning, to give, would would a decision today for either option one or option two limit your ability to complete your planning process, which is now in the in the works?
That's an excellent question, again, through you, your mayor. The commission would very much like to see the full fruition of its strategic plan. We already have a plan in place, so the planning is done. But we, by having this new strategic plan in place, it's actually brought forth a renewed governance model. It's based on full transparency. It's based on collective cooperation with all stakeholders and collective involvement. We've, as you've heard, we post everything on Facebook. We post all our minutes, all our agendas. We seek public consultation. We seek broker and industry consultation. And I fear if if, for example, council votes to dissolve the commission, the voices of the many might go to the wayside. So I believe that if we allow the commission to come to fruition under its current path, you will see a substantive change that will be, you'll all be proud of.
Okay, Counsel Seneck.
Thank you, your worship. A question, the Taxi Commission is supposed to submit their operating budget to City Council by December first, each of each year. Will that be a problem for this year that will receive it by December first?
And thank you for your question, and through you, worship. You will definitely receive it by December first. We've been very transparent. Unfortunately, as the new Chair, things are coming into play, and I'm learning new things. Previous chairs may have not complied, but upon first request of, hey, you forgot something, it was immediately looked after and immediately submitted. So we are following the rules as prescribed by council, and we endeavor to do so moving forward.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Mr. Dowser, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, and your worship.
Okay, so with that, we have no further delegations. We have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing none, we do have, we do have several motions of congratulations, condolence. So first, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counsel Chappelle, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the royal family on the passing of Queen Elizabeth II on September eighth in her ninety-sixth year. Queen Elizabeth II reigned for seven years, the longest reign of any monarch in British history. She leaves behind children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren, among many others around the world, who admired and appreciated her leadership. We express our heartfelt sympathies to all those who knew her. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of former Mayor Harvey Rosen, who passed away on September eighth. Harvey was the ninety-fourth mayor of the City of Kingston, serving in the role for seven years. During his tenure as mayor, he advanced many important projects for the community, including the Leon Center, the Invisza Center, and renovations of the Grand Theater, among many others. Harvey was a dedicated husband, father and grandfather. We extend our deepest sympathies to his wife Sharon, his family, and to all who knew him. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to city employee Sue Hitchcock, her family and friends for the tragic loss of her husband Kevin Hitchcock on September third. Kevin Hitchcock will be dearly missed by all who knew him. Our thoughts are with Sue and her loved ones during this very difficult time. And moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of Carl Young. Carl was a retired deputy fire chief, having served Kingston Township Fire Department, and then the new City of Kingston, Kingston Fire and Rescue for many years, until retirement in 2009. Carl was a dedicated friend to many still in the service, loving husband, father and grandfather. We extend our deepest sympathies to all who knew him. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to deferred motions. We have two deferred motions. The first deferred motion, I would propose to council that we move to consider clause one of report number eighty-two. So clause one, report number eighty-two, supplemental report to board committee nominations process and equity, diversity and inclusion. So any discussion? Counsel Chappelle.
Thank you, your worship. With respect to the nominations committee, I think it's incumbent upon council to realize that the appointment of members of the community to boards and commissions is a responsibility of council, and a responsibility that is duly earned through candidates knocking doors a door and and working hard, like many of you are these upcoming weeks and months and month ahead. And I think it's unfortunate that we would, with the outstanding efforts that this committee, the nominations committee has performed in the past, of trying to ensure an equitable and diverse representation on the committee, that we are now seeing the imposition of members of a diversity and inclusion committee, which really sort of neuters the responsibilities of council members to make positive decisions. And so I can't support the dilution of power of the elected members of council.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I thought I thought my cue was coming up. The chair is yours.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the item and recommendation that's in front of us, just wondering if I could get clarification, if I can get clarification from staff on this, that the recommendation for adding members to the nominations committee with from the equity and diversity inclusion is being deferred. And I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly, that that is part of the recommendation tonight, that that piece would be deferred, at least at this point.
I return the chair.
Actually, I was asking a question through you, Deputy Mayor, too. I just spilled my water, and I lost track of everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'll answer that question on behalf of staff. Mayor Patterson is correct. Based on the discussions that we had with the nomination advisory committee and other research that we did, we are proposing to not make those appointments at this time. However, we still recommend that it does happen, and we'll be taking a look at that in 2023 once again. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I return the chair.
Thank you very much. Counsel Stroud.
Thank you, worship. I have a question because of the comments made by by Counsel Chappelle. I think that we need to have it straight in our minds that even though if it's being deferred, that staff, the question is, while it's being deferred, is staff going to consider the basic concept put forward by Counsel Chappelle, which is that, on the one hand, you have appointed members that are from the pool of counselors, therefore elected members of council, elected democratically. On the other hand, you have members of a of a group that were not that never did stand for election, and therefore never democratically placed there by the community. And when you mix those together, what that does to the to the democratic nature of the body, is that aspect, I don't know if that's a legal aspect, I don't know who this question is for, but I guess it's a procedural aspect. So, Mr. Kirk, could you speak to that? Like, how does the principle of representation survive such a change?
So thank you for that question. Staff will heartily believe in looking at the matter with the EDI lens. We believe it's important to walk the talk when we make these decisions going forward. So between now and when we report back, we'll be doing additional work and review and study to hopefully justify what we're trying.
Mr. Kirk, I'm just gonna just pause there for a moment. Is your micro, your microphone's on?
My apologies. I'll speak a little louder, closer to the mic. So just to follow up on what I had indicated previously, we are looking at this matter with the EDI lens. We believe it's important to walk the talk to ensure that the underrepresented are represented. So between now and 2023, when we will come back with a supplemental report with respect to this, we will be doing additional work to justify what we believe is necessary. And then the new council will make that decision at that time. Just with an honest understanding, staff still believe it's necessary to have EDI members within the nomination advisory committee on a go-forward basis.
So I guess now it's a procedural question. So with the deferred motion and and with the recommendation report number eighty-two, what is it that we're voting on at this point?
Thank you for that question. So we are looking at the supplemental report at this point in time. We've made the changes with respect to deferring the EDI appointment until twenty-three and reviewing that. So what what could happen, and what should happen, in my opinion, is deal with the supplemental report. Once the recommendation is approved within that report, then the deferred motion would be withdrawn.
Right. So because the deferral is Right, so because the deferral is in the supplemental report, and so if it's passed, the deferral, in the, the deferred motion is then moot?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And, and I guess I look forward to the vote. Thank you.
Uh, is, uh, Councilor Kylie is next, yes.
Thank you, and through you, I'm hoping staff could speak to the potential of interviewing applicants. That has been raised formally through the process. And I'm particularly wondering if there'd be any HR support because, well, my esteemed colleagues have many skills. I'm not sure if formally interviewing for the city is one of them without that type of formal support.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you for that question. Yes, there would be support from the Human Resources and Organization Department, as well as the Clerk's Department on a go-forward basis with respect to that. Lot of education and training to come as well. With respect to the interviews, interviews would really be at the discretion of the nominations advisory committee. And we would work with the committee to come up with a plan with respect to interviews. Not all would probably be interviewed. If you've got 500 applications, it'd be a pretty long weekend to do the interviews on all those people. Thank you.
Thank you, that's good.
Okay, next is Councilor Holland.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. So I guess, first of all, just, I wanted to provide a little bit of context as someone who's on the EDI committee and also has been on the nominations committee in the past. So the purpose in this case is to improve diversity on all, well, one of, one of the goals of the EDI committee is to improve diversity throughout the city of Kingston and support those activities. And when staff had originally looked at, brought this recommendation forward to have three spots on the nominations advisory committee, that would be equity folks from the equity committee and using that lens. That was brought forward to address the direction of council to improve equity and diversity within the city of Kingston on boards, et cetera. Am I correct? I guess there's a question for staff first of all.
That's correct.
Okay, so when, when it was then changed to exclude the decision to defer this portion is, was not something that staff, it came from council. It was not something that the EDI committee or the nominations committee requested. So I guess, I'm just trying to caution members of council when we have this discussion and when we talk about the democratic process, what we are sort of not doing is talking about the fact that equity is not currently built into the democratic process and that that's part of what we're trying to do with these recommendations. That's what the committee is trying to do and that's what we're trying to embed into the nominations process so that we can have a more diverse set of people involved in committees and boards and every other activity at the city of Kingston. So I'm just trying to highlight that because I, I understand that we're not making a decision tonight. It's been, it has, this part has, I'm talking about something that's already happened, but the, I, I'm just concerned with some of the conversation this evening on this topic because it doesn't, you know, slowing down things, that's what equity work is. And I think we all need to have a better concept of that as we discuss this. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor Neal.
Thank you. And I've been on the nominations committee for some time and I can see, I can understand the kind of tension about the committee having the power to make the decisions. But I agree that, and I think our questionnaire of applicants is better now because we, we seek, we ask people to kind of self-identify and, which is helpful because, quite frankly, a few years ago, we'd just go by the worst kind of application, what's their last name, which isn't very telling. So, but we've come a long way. The first time I ever did a nominations process was in 1991. I was a totally naive freshman councillor, just elected. We were given, all of council were given a stack of papers without any advance time to look them over and with all kinds of names that we didn't even recognize. And so we were looking, you know, you were looking around for somebody who knew this person whose name was in front of us. And it was, was a horrendous process. So the nominations committee, I'm thankful, has come a long way. And, and the clerks put together a big binder, but with lots of information. But I would really encourage people to be more willing to self-identify so that our decisions can be more impactful about being able to represent the, the total community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hutchinson.
First, I appreciate what Councilor Holland had to say. My concerns are not only with that, but having served four terms on nominations committee and chaired for almost all of it, the, I was concerned about the suggestions of that they could, the committee could choose to interview applicants or not. And clerk is invited to correct me at any point here. The, and I just remember we had the binder, as Councilor Neal points out. And I think when, at least, it's once a term usually, but it recurs. I think it was 1,150 pages. Okay? So then we get into the situation where, you know, some of these applications for certain committees or boards or whatever are like 20, 30, 40 people or more. Okay? We don't have KECO anymore, but, so that's a few off. But, and if you choose to interview them, presuming everybody on the proposed committee gets a vote, I'm concerned about what's, in professional terms, that is fine, but I see this more as a community, the city as community, appointing people rather than the city as corporation, but appointing people because this corporate, this is more corporate and, and for good reason. Because if you choose to, to interview people, you are going to have to ask yourself, who gets an interview and who doesn't? And what kind of, somebody might object, right? And you notice that staff, I think correctly actually, have said the questions will come from clerk's office and human resources. Why? Because when you're interviewing these days, you have to ask the same questions of everybody. Anybody who's done any interviewing knows that there's case law that says, don't go anywhere else. Okay, so I'm concerned about how, what the effect on the whole process is being. Like, I'm in favor of like the public appointment policy. I'm in favor of promoting, sending notices to organizations, informal and informal, that's all really good. And self-identified diversity, because you have to track the dang thing, right? Otherwise, you don't even know what you're doing. But the interviewing process is like, to me, opening a Pandora's box. Because that, to me, spells explosion of work for staff. And you notice in this report, they say, there's something, hey, we don't, they're basically saying, don't make us do that. Not this part, but other parts. And, and so you can see where their work is being multiplied and for the committee. Well, I'm telling you, if you had to read the 1,150 pages, I, I grant you, you get really good at it, but it's still rough. And so I don't know if the clerk has, I mean, I know that's a well-meant in, in intention, like a suggestion, and it has some merit. I'm just considered, concerned about who's going to want to serve on this, right? I mean, I had a job for most of my time as councillor, a full, more than full-time job, and I had counsel, which you know is an expanding experience. And this will come up again under the planning representations, but has the clerk got any response to that? And because I'm not asking you so much to defend yourself as clarify and expand if you wish.
Mr. Clerk?
So thank you for that question. What I indicated previously in the report itself, it's going to be solely at the discretion of the nominations advisory committee where they want to go down that path. That is an option, it's a relevant option, and we're there to help nominations advisory committee if they want to go down that path. But it's not mandatory to do the interviews. It's optional.
So I predict, if we keep this, it would be precious few interviews. Because how do you show equity in a case like that? And you don't do that when you're applying to the city. You might apply, but no one says you're getting an interview, right? Because that's how corporations operate. So anyway, is that it? Okay, I just wanted to bring that up and show that I have support for certain aspects of the thing and I, of the policy. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We'll call the vote. Again, this is on clause one of report number 82. All those in favor, opposed? It carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Councilor Chappell opposed. So with that, deferred motion number one is now, is now moot, as is deferred motion number two, given what council passed earlier coming out of closed session. So with that, we will now move to reports. First up is report number 81 from the CAO.
Moved by Councilor Ossanik, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that report number 81 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are four clauses. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Councilor Chappell, number two. Right, and we will have to separate clause four for Councilor Bohm's pecuniary. Okay, so first we will call the vote on clause one and clause three together. Clause one is a word of contract, City Hall Market Street Bridge repairs. Clause three, a word of contract for next generation 911 implementation. All those in favor, opposed? And that's carried. Clause two, a word of contract, Kingston Norman Rogers Airport asphalt repairs. Councilor Chappell.
Yes, thank you, worship. I was reading the, the proposal and I am really pleased that Kylie Paving has received this work. And I was wondering if staff would be able to encourage Kylie Paving to repave the streets of Eunice Brass and drive.
Okay, it has to be, we speak to the item that's actually in front of us, Councilor Chappell, but a valiant attempt. Any, any other discussion on this class? We'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed? And that's carried. Clause four, so Councilor Bohm will step away. Remote system upgrade service with Motorola Solutions Canada Inc. All those in favor, opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to report number 82 from the CAO.
Moved by Councilor Holland, seconded by Councilor Oosterhoff, that report number 82 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so we've already dealt with clause one. Clause two, planning committee procedures. Councilor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you, as it was my motion and as the current chair of planning, and I'm sure I'm speaking for former chairs as well and all committee members, I wanted to thank staff for looking for these modifications and particularly using the comparator municipalities. So hopefully this will make, not a lighter workload because we know the complexity of what we deal with there, but hopefully a more sustainable one for all involved, including staff. So thanks for that work.
Councilor Sanik.
Thank you, your worship. Unfortunately, my viewpoint is opposite. I don't agree with these recommendations. I can't support them. Like, this could make four nights per month of planning committee meetings. That's what my problem is. Councilor Hutchinson was just talking about the extra workload of maybe nominations committee having to do interviews and, you know, just how time-consuming that can be. This could be, you know, instead of two nights per month for one committee, four nights per month for one committee. And, you know, that's just too much. Like, that means that the councillor would have to make sure that there's not another committee meeting the next night on the Thursday night, right? And we do have a lot of committees that meet on Thursday nights, right? We have like arts recreation, community policy, you know, that meets on Thursday nights. I think admin policy committees meets on Thursday nights, you know? And so that could be a conflict there and also for the public because that means they might have to free up a second night for that. Speaking of the public, I also don't like the fact that now you'll have to register, you know, to, to say anything. So I think people know, like for Zoom, that they do register ahead of time so they can get the special link that would allow them to speak. But if we have to make everyone register, you know, that can exclude some people because they'll find out at the very last minute about the meeting. They'll want to come down to City Hall or, yeah, just registering ahead of time. That's too burdensome for the public, you know? So I don't agree with that either. I think that some of the meetings have gone really long because we let the applicant speak so much. So, you know, they always do the introduction at the beginning of their proposal. It seems we give them half an hour now. Like, they, we never used to give them that long before, going back years ago, you know? It, we never had so many 1:30 in the morning planning committee meetings years ago either, just the odd one. Now we're always doing, you know, midnight, 12:30. So when the people speak, right, the public speaks, then we cut it short and then we let the applicant speak for, you know, 20 minutes. And then we take more questions and we let the applicant again speak for another 20 minutes. All of that adds up. Like, really, the applicant should only speak at the beginning to do the introduction and then at the end of all the public comments to wrap it up and to try to answer all those questions. And it should be the chair's responsibility or council's responsibility, you know, of the members. They can keep track too, to make sure that the applicant has responded to all, but not giving them so much, so much time to, you know, like every, you know, five, 10 questions, we give them another 20 minutes. That's why our meetings are going until 12:30 in the morning. So I cannot support, I cannot support this. Whether to move to Wednesdays as opposed to Thursdays, that's no problem. Maybe we could try to move planning committee to be on the opposite week of city councils. So city council is always the first Tuesday, the third Tuesday of the month. Maybe, you know, next term, we should try having planning committee to be on the second Thursday and the last Thursday. But then again, okay, maybe move it Wednesday because that's going to conflict with ARCP committee, you know? But the, yeah, CRCA is the fourth Thursday, or fourth Wednesday. Anyway, I can't support these recommendations in front of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have a speaker's list. Now, next is Councilor McLaren.
Thank you. As I was reading through the comparator cities, it seemed that they are much quicker than we are in the sense that they have it once a month and some do, some seem to have it for very short times, a committee, the whole. I'm wondering why that is, like, do they rubber stamp it? Or do they not have engaged citizens? Or are they not growing as fast as Kingston is? Like, I'm curious, beyond what was said in the report as to the comparator cities and how they seem to take a lot less time to do planning, what else is different between them and us that we take so long?
CAO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through Ms. Mayor. I, I will get started in trying to answer the question. I know the clerk will probably have more to add since his team led some of the review. You're correct, Councilor McLaren, other municipalities of similar size seem to be getting through their planning committee at a faster pace. And, and they also are combining. getting through their planning committee at a faster pace. And they also are combining, for example, some of their public and comprehensive report, a number of them do that for matters that may not be as substantial. Typically, it's rare we do that here because the public usually, you know, will react strongly that they need to have an opportunity to provide input. So that's definitely one of the areas that we've noticed there are some differences. But I'm not sure if Mr. Clerk would like to add more to that. But we are by far the municipality, the ones we've researched, that provides the most opportunities for citizen engagement.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you for that question. That's where I was going to go with respect to my comments. The city has gone quite forward with respect to engagement and outreach. And as a result, we've got more people that are interested in what's happening here at the council table. So that's one of the reasons why the meetings go a little longer. The idea of splitting them potentially into two evenings is to allow that not to happen because when you're making decisions after midnight, I'm not really sure that that's the right time to be making decisions that affect lots of issues. The other comment I'd like to make is the idea that we are also looking at changing the date and opposite side of council so that there wouldn't be any conflict. So you're looking at first and third for council, second and fourth for the planning committee, to allow that to happen, to then also allow council to be able to go into a second night if it's necessary. I think one thing to keep in mind is this term has had a lot of big, significant applications that have gone forward that have resulted in a number of additional public meetings and that outreach that we talked about. So when you do go out into the community and you try to ensure that different segments of the community are represented, whether they're underrepresented, just somebody interested in the subject, and those who have vested interest in the subject, that just allows the meetings to go a little longer. Perhaps we could be stricter with respect to some of the commentary that we allow at some of our meetings. I'm not quite sure about that. I know that in our research, we had some municipalities that were quite clear that through either effective chairing, not that ours isn't effective, but effective chairing, they would ensure that people would not go off on a tangent. And that is sometimes what happens when you try to become a very open and transparent group. And it takes time to be able to make the model work. But my view is the engagement has dictated that the meetings go a little longer. That's not necessarily a bad thing when you have better participation in local government. Thank you.
So if I heard that in summary, it's, we don't know if they're rubber stamping, but we have more engagement than other communities and we are busier than other communities. So this isn't entirely a bad thing. It's just an inconvenient thing if we have to stay up till twelve-thirty or one. Honestly, I'm a little torn by this. I've heard what some of my fellow councillors have said. So I do support trying to make it more streamlined. At the same time, a lot of what Councillor O'Sannick was saying strikes me as pretty decent. And so I'm still not sure how I'm going to vote on this. I'm just going to listen to a few more.
Okay, next is Deputy Mayor Neil.
Thank you very much. I've been on planning for a number of years now, and it is indeed a curse and a blessing to be on planning. We can go till midnight or twelve-thirty or one. If you have the same number of meetings as you have for council, and there's always, you put in more hours of both preparing and attending planning than we do for council. I agree that part of that is that we have a really engaged community. And I don't want to diminish that engagement at all. The reality is, as important as planning is, we went for much of this term and the previous term with the only umbrella committee was planning, where we didn't have a full roster of members. And I don't blame my colleagues for that. The reality is, if you have a busy job, if you have a family, putting in twice a month, putting in a six-till-midnight or twelve-thirty meeting is pretty frustrating. So, but there are ways that we can streamline it, okay? With all due respect for the current chair, right now, a ruling from the chair is if we have eight members of the public that speak to a file, that's, the proponent is given the courtesy of having equal time. Do they need equal time? I don't think so. And I think that's what Councillor O'Sannick brought up. They need the time to present, but they don't need equal time with all of the public that want to come and speak. So that's a decision made by the chair that could be corrected, I think, and would make it more streamlined in the process. I think the curse and the blessing of being in Kingston, one, we have Queen's, RMC, and St. Lawrence. So we have some of the smartest constituents in all of Canada, if not in the world. And the result is they're an engaged group. And they come and quite often want to counter some of the presentations or the points given by proponents or given by staff. And that's a good thing. And we don't want to discourage or diminish that. So I think that we could find ways of streamlining it. One of those ways is to not have, not feel that we have to give the proponents equal time with the whole community when they come to planning. Give them adequate time, but we still need to allow the public to speak. And that's, that's a difficult decision because we do have, continue to have eleven o'clock, eleven-thirty midnight meetings of planning. Part of that curse and a blessing, take a look, we have increased taxes at only inflation or below. But take a look at our budgets. Our budget increases by four or five percent every year. How do we manage that? Through growth. The growth within the community gives us that three or four percent buffer.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. So we don't want to discourage development, but we want it to be, to continue to be supported by the community. And we need to let the community speak on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I do, and I recognize you.
Thank you. Having been a former Chair of Planning Committee myself, I think that the root issue is this. It is not in the public interest for people to have to sit through five, six hours for a chance to speak or a chance to be able to hear the deliberations of the committee. It's just not in the public interest for people to have to stay up until eleven o'clock or twelve. A great sympathy for everyone around this table on having been through it. It is exhausting. It's not in the public interest. I think we agree, and I think the reason why we passed this motion in the first place is we all agree that the status quo was just not working. It's always easy to kind of criticize a change and be like, well, find reasons why it wouldn't work. But I would propose that if what is we have now is not working, why don't we try something else and see how it goes? We can always change it back if it's not working. Here's what I would suggest. The system that's proposed is very similar to the way that we operate council. All of you know that if council meeting goes very late, that at some point, when we know it's not in the public interest for us all to be up super late, and it's not in the interest of us making decisions late at night, that I will say, I'm going to bring you, bring us all back the following day. Now, there are times when our agenda is really, really full, and you know what? That's the best decision, is for us to just split it in two so we can come back fresh the second night. But I'll also say this. There are times where just knowing that we may have to come back the second night has this amazing ability for us to focus our minds, shorten our comments, and be actually more efficient in getting city work done. So maybe actually having this as a proposal of, if we don't get through this, we're going to have to come back again, that might actually be a way that we can make planning committee work better. So I would suggest to council, why don't we give it a try and see what happens? And if it doesn't work, we can always consider something else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councillor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. And I think that we have to do something because it really is not working. I really, absolutely concur with what the mayor said in terms of the engagement. And how many people get upset, you know, sitting there for hours and hours and hours waiting for their file to be considered, right? And not just councillors, and the impact that, or sorry, the impact that has on the public that are trying to make some, have some input into this process. It's incredibly tough on staff. I mean, our staff are unbelievable. They're committed, they're there until midnight or one o'clock in the morning, and then they got to get up in the morning and work again. You know, so it's not fair to them. And it's not fair, I don't think, I don't think we get the best decisions at one o'clock in the morning, to be truthful. And so, you know, do we consider complex issues really quickly? No. We take a long time. We deliberate on those. And then, so what is left at the end of the night might be as, just as important an issue as the complex issue, but we maybe don't spend as much time on it as we should because we're tired. I think we really need to look at trying something different. I do think that, there's a couple of things that I think we could do. One of the things, I'll just speak in terms of the applicant having as much time. They don't typically take as much time. So typically what the chair does is he allows four members of the public, or five members of the public to speak, and they ask questions. And the purpose of the applicant in responding is to respond to those questions. It's not to advocate again for the project, it's to answer the questions that people have. And I can't answer those questions. And in some cases, staff can't answer those questions. So that's why it's important for the applicant to have some time. I've never seen them take as much time as the public takes in terms of their presentations. It's very, very rare. So, you know, we have to try something different. The other thing I have to tell you is we spend an inordinate amount of time talking about site plan issues and not talking about land use planning. And that's what we're supposed to be talking about. Now, I understand that because that's what the public wants to speak to us about. And those are the issues that they're typically the most passionate about. So I get that. But we have to recognize that at some point, that's not productive use of our time, or we have to say, look, we're going to do a lot more bump up, you know? The reality is we need to try something different. We need to, if it means coming back for two meetings that are reasonable in terms of their length, that are a bit more focused in terms of land use planning, that allow everybody to have an opportunity to be heard, and that forces people a little bit in the public to say, I need to get my two cents in there. And this is the process for doing that, as opposed to reading the paper that day and responding and reacting to that. They can still do that through written correspondence. So there's lots of ways that we could streamline this. I think we need to take a shot at it. And if it doesn't work the way that we hoped, if Councillor O'Sannick is right, that, you know, this is just not serving the best needs of the public, well, let's take another look at it then. But we have to try something different in the short term. And I'll tell you, if you vote against this, then I sure hope you're also considering putting your name forward for planning next year. That would be my opinion. Thank you.
My thank you. Next is Councillor Strout.
Thank you. It's kind of ironic, we're going to take all this time discussing how to make a meeting faster. But no, I joke, but this is actually, is actually fairly clear in my mind what's going on here. I've never sat on planning, but I have been, as you know, to planning it many times, representing Sidnum, because there's lots of planning applications in my district. And I've chaired Heritage, which has a similar process. But Heritage, we don't go back and forth every few questions to the applicant. It's just once at the end. So that worked well in Heritage, so I like that idea. Look, if the meetings are too long, everybody has some responsibility over that. The members, members of the public, the proponent, staff, everybody that speaks at the meeting has taken a share of that time, right? So if you're talking about streamlining, you got to streamline. Like, adding a second meeting on a second day isn't streamlining. That's like, oh, there's too much traffic, let's build a bigger highway. We know how that works out. You just get more cars, right? And if you make double meaning, I'm sorry, you'll get, some people say, I don't want to meet tomorrow, but you'll get other people saying, well, we've got a whole nother day, let's keep talking. Right? What you need is very strict chairing guidelines to follow, right? You need, you need chairing guideline reform is what you need. You need maybe, you need to go to four minutes per person. And maybe the applicant needs to have a time limit as well. Right now, it doesn't sound like they have a time limit. They don't usually take equal time, as Councillor Hill said, but they don't have a time limit. You, I think you need to consider things like that. And maybe you already have limits, each person can only speak once, more limits like that. You need to put more limits on the time, or you're not going to fix anything. You can, you can change it a hundred times, and if you don't put, if you don't restrict speaking time in any way, you haven't fixed it. So I really don't, I think it's a complete moot point, whether you have it on Wednesday or Thursday, or whether you have one meeting or two. We already do that. We do that with council. What we need is an agreement to be more succinct. And to Councillor Hill's point about site plan issues, when I was Chair of Heritage, when people straight off topic, it's a tough job, but the referees got to sometimes put up their hand and blow the whistle, right? Offside, this is what we're talking about, get back on topic, right? It's, I don't envy the Chair of Planning, but I mean, and that's why I think there needs to be some, something behind the chair, like posted rules, and that you read out at the beginning of the meeting, you know? But it's, this is not, these suggestions are very well-intentioned, and it's great brainstorming to see some of these ideas, but it's not going to fix the problem unless you restrict, further restrict everybody's time at the meeting. It's just, it's an exercise in futility. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councillor Hutchinson?
Somehow I feel I'm approaching the rules. But the, I just want to give, switching planning to the second and fourth week, I think Wednesday, there's a rationale for Wednesday, and I think it's perfectly sound. And I've thought that for years. Other councillors wanted to get the heavy lifting done in one week, council and then planning. That's fairly crushing. So I noticed that the public has to reg, is asked to register, actually. That's all they're asked to do. And if they don't, they can still speak, it's just their slot is, you know, six or seven or ten down the line. And so I gather it's not any different than the virtual, when we have the virtual meetings where they have to register to get on. So I think that's a small change, and we can live with that. I do look at the times and the amount of time. I think it's, appears to be committed, reflective of this council and other councils' commitment to an open and transparent process and public input. And I'm not going to apologize for that. So one thing, though, that I know from the public's point of view, is, we hear this all the time, is that if developers are going to make proposals that are contrary to the, significantly contrary to the official plan and/or the zoning bylaw, then you're going to get objections, and you're going to get pushed back. And what the public would like to know is, you've got a bylaw, why aren't you following it? That they turn back on us, that we're not enforcing it. Now, you can try to explain to people that there are times when, you know, the city grows in, you know, barely controlled sort of way, and you need to be able to be flexible, like some of the official plan changes. some official plan changes and zoning bylaw changes are really rather minor, nobody objects. So, and, but, if you have that, and they can make any process, any proposal they want, and staff has to take it, as they remind us continually, then you're going to get differences of opinion, and you're going to have to spend the time on it. And sometimes it's good, and sometimes we're sitting there listening to things that are not planning reasons, and we aren't able to, we can be sympathetic to their concerns, but we can't do anything about it, right? We all know that, we voted for things we really didn't like, or, you know, that are difficult. So incidentally, it shows on the 10 o'clock limit, that's not a hard limit according to what I read in the, in the report, we can extend, as we do here at, what, quarter to 11 or something. So if we can see the, I'm sure that committee, if it's going to see the end at half an hour, they're not coming back on Thursday, hell or come, or high water, they're not coming back. So, you know, I think it's, I've been sort of persuaded, I was a bit difficult about this, but I'm sort of persuaded that this deserves a shot, as Councilor Hill was saying. So I'm going to, I'm going to support it, and I'm sure, I was a little concerned in the beginning of the doubling up of the meetings, that we couldn't get a full roster on planning for so long this year. So I was a bit concerned about that, because it's probably the most important committee, and I'm speaking as a former Chair of numerous standing committees and other committees, that's what we do, right? That's our central function. So anyway, I will support it, and, I mean, I think they're well-intentioned. I wouldn't want to serve on the second Thursday every month, but there you go, okay?
Thank you. Next is Councilor Ostrov.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and I certainly appreciate the comments, and I only served on the planning once, and I know it was very challenging to be on planning committee, so I do appreciate the work of staff on this, this is, I definitely can support this as well, and I guess the question I have related to it is how flexible some of the good, some of these suggestions here tonight can, are they, would they be considered as well as we move forward, or is that got to come with like a policy changes, or can some of these things be considered along the way here?
Ms. Clerk?
So thank you for that question, councillor. We would like to try these options for at least the first term, first year of the term, to see how it goes. The reality is that if it does not work, we will change it, we, council will change it.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there nobody else that wishes to speak? We will call the vote on Clause 2. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries by a vote of 10 to 3. Councilor Stroud, O'Sannick, and Neil opposed. Okay, on to Clause 3, trespass notice policy and vexatious conduct policy. Councilor Doherty?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. These new policies are designed to assist staff in, certainly in troubling circumstances, but I'm just wondering what kind of training staff will get, including will they receive trauma-induced, trauma-informed training?
Who, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So staff, we intend to provide training to staff through both the city's e-learning platform, as well as legal services will invite interested staff to lunch and learn sessions where we can explain the policies, the purposes of the policies, and staff will have an opportunity...
If you could just speak a little bit closer to the microphone.
Sorry. Where staff will have an opportunity to ask questions, and legal services can address those questions.
Sorry, that was a little bit difficult to hear, so I guess my question is really, are we, how are we ensuring that we're not putting certainly frontline staff in a, in a more challenging position, but on the other hand, how are we protecting, for example, the trespasser, and ensuring that all situations are handled also with care, and considering that some individuals have experienced trauma in the past? But on the other hand, we want to keep both individuals, if there are just two individuals, safe, but anybody else in the community as well?
Thank you for that question. So the trespass to, the trespass notice policy explicitly states that the city doesn't expect or condone employees to put themselves in a situation where they might be harmed or feel that they're at risk of harm, and that would certainly include psychological harm that, you know, might be based in past traumatic experiences. So that's not an expectation of staff under the policy.
Okay, next is Councilor Holland.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Yeah, this is very similar to Councilor Doherty's question, but I'm, I'm curious about, I'm sure, like, the report references existing policies, including the encampment protocol, and I know that we have our own internal HR supports that you're kind of noting, but it would be good just to get some reassurance about the, like, what actually exists. I mean, we know, for example, like, what would exist for staff in terms of support across the path of, from lunch and learn, let's say, like, they get, first get the information throughout that process of, let's say, someone has experienced a situation, and then were involved, would there be some kind of debrief or HR process after that? And then thinking about the ability that our staff might have to support individuals that they're interacting with, or will there be some kind of referral process that can assist with individuals who are, you know, they're in a trespassing situation, clearly in distress in some way, where some supports might be offered?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, both policies, as you suggested, reference and require staff to apply the policies consistently with the city's existing policies and protocols, including the encampment protocol, including the respect in the workplace policies, and the other human resources policies. So the policies are intended to complement those already existing policies, and I think the intention is that those kind of supports for staff are provided in the pre-existing policies, and so these two new policies aren't intended to replace those, those processes, they're intended to fill other gaps that we identified.
Ms. Parley?
Thank you, and through your worship, just to add to that, the city does have an employee assistance program that does provide counselling services to employees as well.
Councilor Holland?
Thank you, yeah, I'll just say, I mean, I certainly understand the need for delegated authority, and I think the report does a good job of summarizing this, you know, potential It, it, it just, it does continue to concern me that there may not be resources to refer anyone to, and so it would be nice to get some information in the future about what, what the result of, of a trespass or a sort of, I mean, I don't know the level of detail, I don't think we're looking for anything very specific at council, but just mostly an understanding of how we can, in those interactions, how, interactions, how we might best be able to help someone navigate the social service network in Kingston.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Oh, Councilor Hill?
Thank you, and I used to be a high school principal, and when I was a high school principal, I had to deal with lots of folks who were really, really upset, and I didn't deliver great news all the time. And I understand that, I absolutely understand that people, you know, can get upset, and that they don't like the decisions, or they don't like the interaction that they've had. But it was described to me pretty well when somebody said to me, you know, that this isn't a commercial enterprise, this isn't a situation where the customer is always right, sometimes the customer is wrong, and they have to be able to hear that, and they have to be here, able to hear that in a civil way, and they have to respond in a civil way. And we have to ensure, and because, you know, the level of vitriol, which I never saw in my years as principal, the level of vitriol has really, really increased, I think everybody recognizes that over the last few years. I think it's fueled by what people see online, and I think some people unfortunately take that to the next level, which is to speak that way to people, or to threaten people in public, in person, and we just can't have that. We have to protect our staff, we have to ensure that people are safe, that's an obligation that we as the employer have to our, to our folks. And I know that, you know, they will get the kind of training that they need to in order to help to, to head those kinds of difficult situations off, but failing that, there has to be a recourse for us to be able to address those kinds of situations, and at the end of the day, you know, we as, as the corporate body for the city have the obligation to protect staff, and we have to do that. So I support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will call the vote on Clause 3. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried by a vote of 11 to 1, that Councilor Stroud opposed. Okay, Clause 4, Neighborhood Climate Action Champions Program. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Clause 5, Providence Manor Redevelopment. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. It's 9:01. I propose that we take a 10-minute break, and we will reconvene with Report Number 83 at 9:11. See you in 10 minutes. It is 9:12, so we'll, we'll get moving again. Okay, so we are now at Report Number 83 from the CAO.
Moved by Councilor Doherty, seconded by Councilor Kylie, that Report Number 83 from the Chief Administrative Officer, Consider, be received and considered.
Okay, so there is just the one clause, options for Kingston and Area Taxi Commission. So as council is aware, this is a consider report. What that means is that I will look for a councillor to move one of the presented options. If that option passes, then we're done, if it loses, then another councillor has an option to present the alternative option. Councilor Hutchinson?
I'd like to move Option 2, please.
Okay, so Councilor Hutchinson would like to move Option 2. Is there a second? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Neil. So Option 2 is now on the floor, and Councilor Hutchinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put this in context relative to my own experience, which is for the last two or three years, I've been hearing concerns about the operation of the taxi commission, unfortunately, from not just the taxi industry, but public people, drivers, just about everybody involved with this, you know, not representatives, but voices from that, from that context. And so, as you probably witnessed today, you know, there's very different takes on this, and frankly, my own experience over the la, before I moved the last motion, was a year or so before that, is one group would say that we're doing this, and this is good, and blah, 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 and the other group would say, no, that's not what happened, this is going on, sometimes they were parallel, and you're trying to bring them together so you can figure out what some form of reality is, right? And as I said at the last motion, I couldn't do it, and that's why I brought the motion, because there has to be more clarity and more transparency than that in order to run something that affects the public so fundamentally as the taxi industry and frankly, the rideshare program, right? So that's why I brought that motion, and I think what we heard today sort of reinforces that. Some people think they're doing sterling work, and other people say, no, we've had enough, this doesn't work for us. And so that's been going on, and I heard from previous commissioners, the taxi industry, drivers, the public, and it cleared to me we need more clarity and transparency, and as you heard, the taxi industry said, we're in favor of this. I've warned them that being managed by the city doesn't mean they're going to get their own way. You know, the city's going to try and do a good job, as they usually do, about these, managing these details, but it's not always going to be agreement, and they acknowledge that. They, this is where they're at now, is from my point of view. We also see from the report that staff have undertaken a governance and managerial review, and they think that what they are proposing is, will be less costly, because they can fold it into things we already do, we do enforcement, we do, you know, supply all kinds of services in different ways, it's not that great, and they can do it within budget. So there's no loss there. So I thank the commissioners, I think they really have been trying, especially in the last six months, even the taxi industry granted that tonight, and that's what I had heard from them, but I think the message is, it's time. It's been around for 30 years, 30 years? Yeah, more than 30 years, and it serves its purpose, now it's time to take a professional, clearer, and more transparent approach to it, and the public will be involved because they'll be at the, you know, virtually or otherwise at the meetings if they wish, and they'll be talking to us, as they always have, and not me, but those of you continuing. So those are my reasons for doing this, and why I think Option 2, it's time to do this. Thanks.
Okay, next is Deputy Mayor Neil.
Just very quickly, I'm happy to second this, I think there's the potential, and we've discussed membership and the process through the nominations committee, and I would be hopeful that this, like other committees, will have an opportunity to have a selection process that would ensure that there's public input and, and members of the public, as well as potentially members of the, of the industry as well, that would have some input into the process, so.
A Cao hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the report that staff prepared for council is one that looks at how the city could incorporate basically the functions that are currently provided by the taxi commission within the municipal structure, and that's all the report focused on. It did not do an assessment of the operations of the taxi commission, because that's not what the motion called for. The motion approved by council was quite clear on options to incorporate licensing, regulating, and governing within the municipal services, which is what we provided. To your question, Councilor Neil, there would be a different mechanism in terms of public input. Obviously, bylaws that are related to taxi services would go through most likely EITP, that hasn't been all, you know, obviously confirmed, we would need to bring that back to council, but it... know, obviously confirmed. We would need to bring that back to council. But it is definitely a mechanism through which we know the public has access to make delegations and be quite involved, engaged, and those would then make their way to council. For fees, and I know that's been a concern of council in the last year, for fees, those would be part of our fees and charges by law for the city. So again, that information is public. The public has the ability to be engaged in terms of delegation and providing their input to members of council.
Thanks for that clarity. I, September 2023 gives us an opportunity through our public accessibility process to be able to hear from both drivers, owners, and particularly people who, citizens who use the taxi services. So I want to say I look forward to that, but I won't be here. But I look forward to the next council addressing that. So, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Senek.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you, we heard our delegation speak to that they're working on a license renewal online for the cab drivers, right? They can get their new permits online without having to go to the office. If this becomes in-house, would we still, would the city still be able to offer that service?
Commissioner Agnew?
Thank you. And through you, Your Worship. Yes, the intention would be for us to be bringing the licensing on through the dash portal, so it would be integrated with the rest of our online system for payment. So that's part of the work we would need to do over the course of time to be ready for taking on that service. But that's been part of our analysis and work plan.
Thank you. That's great to hear. And also, access to the financial statements, you know, that could be at one of those working group meetings, I imagine, which would all be posted under our committee and board section of the city website. So it'd be accessible to anyone in the public at any time. And I suppose, too, with the working group, there would be a chair, and we would still, through nominations committee, go through the process of having some members of the public on the working group, if it was in the city.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So the working group would have definitely representation from the taxi companies, from Loyalist Township, and from the City of Kingston in terms of staff to help support that working group. We could look at incorporating members of the public. We haven't finalized that yet, because we don't know which direction council would like to go. So there's still some time to do some additional work. We would have a year to finalize those things. But definitely, members of the public could be considered. As far as the financials are concerned, those would become financials of the city. So anybody would have access to any of that information. As you know, all of our information is available to the public. But what we are suggesting is that we would provide to the working group some quarterly updates, financial updates, to make sure that they're aware of how much is being spent and what the revenues are for the taxis, especially the taxi companies, to be aware of that information.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next is Counselor Doherty.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So I was on the Taxi Commission. When I joined the Taxi Commission, there were, clearly, there were challenges. And the, at one stage, the commission, actually, we asked to meet with the city acting solicitor at the time, Mr. McLeod, and CAO Hurdle, because we were asking the same questions. So when Counselor Hutchinson brought this motion forward, I didn't even know he was bringing this motion forward. He brought it forward because he's heard other things, and he's had different experiences with it. But certainly, we asked the same kind of questions, because it was apparent that the system wasn't working. But I really want to applaud the current commission, because obviously, they've introduced a lot of really positive changes. We heard really positive things over the last five months in particular. But I just can't, but one of the biggest flaws is actually the nomination process and the fact that every year, the nomination committee has to choose a new commission. And I can't see that changing. In fact, one of the delegation, the one who is speaking about the, that he led the strategic plan, he showed us a thank you note from Ms. Aziz, who was a commissioner. Well, she actually is no longer with the commission because she stepped down. And that is exactly the problem, that people come, people go. Great work from Counselor Chappell and Mr. Dowzer, for sure. But who, but there's nothing in, I don't see it really changing or, no, hold on a second. I need to rephrase that. Changes have been implemented, but can we guarantee that will continue into the future? And I think we need to listen to the industry, and certainly, my experience makes me vote for Option 2, although I do want to thank the current commission.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Ostrhoff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. This file is fairly new to me, and, but I've sort of got familiar with it over the last few weeks. And I do appreciate what we heard tonight from the commission. That's probably the first time for me that I have heard as a counselor. And so it's been difficult for me to, I'm sort of right in the middle. But just hearing it tonight and listening to some of the positives that I'm hearing, I, probably the strongest positive for supporting this motion is, as a businessman, I am being involved in regulatory for a big part of my career. Industry has spoken, and I'm sensitive to that. I see the value of it. And I see, I don't know the past, but I know that some of it's born from that, the concerns, but also, there's a depth of knowledge there. I really appreciate Counselor Doherty's comments, because I also want to celebrate the wins that they've had in the short term. And I guess the one question I had for staff was, can we, is it, because I don't want those efforts to be wasted. I would like it to be, is, I mean, we have the next year ahead, but would there be a complete change out of staff? Or could we expect that some of these, you know, where the traction has been made for good, we're not going to throw them that out? Or we're going to recognize that and build on that as well?
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So we've had conversations with the taxi companies. They actually approached staff after this motion was passed. Definitely, there is a desire from the taxi companies to continue anything that's been working well, to look at migrating that to the city, should the city take oversight of the service. So we wouldn't be looking at making drastic change quickly. That's not what we would want to do. We would want to work with the taxi companies to gradually, in terms of the bylaws, gradually make the changes that make sense. But again, engage them and engage people that may be on the working group as well.
Yes, thank you. And when I, Mayor Patterson, so when I make the list of the positives that we're bringing up here tonight, I'm inclined to support the motion. When we think about transparency and clarity, again, for me, the strong voice of the industry and their desire for last hostility, for financial transparency through the city, several times, I've heard the comment, "It's time." Again, I really think that we could build on the positives and the good work that's been done over the last months. And so I can support it in that way. And, but I recognize that this is a difficult decision in some ways, but I am prepared to trust that good will come from this, and that's what they're asking for. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I seconded Counselor Hutchinson's motion originally, having heard some of the same information, and having spoken to the mover, and having spoken to some of the industry partners that we heard from tonight as well. At that time, though, I hadn't spoken to any commissioners. I thought, you know, because just seconding a motion, that would start the conversation. That was my thinking at the time. It would start the conversation, see what it looked like if staff followed the motion, and come back. We've got the report here in front of us now. And now, having heard from the current chair of the commission, that I'm in a little bit of a dilemma, because, because they've demonstrated, he and the delegate before him demonstrated that they were earnestly working to address all of these concerns that had been brought up. So there's concerns that were presented to me that prompted the motion, also prompted this action from the commission, from the current commission. I think we can all agree that there's been a lot of progress made in that regard. So Mr. Dowzer is here tonight. He demonstrated this. He also demonstrated a pretty impressive knowledge, having only been chair this year, to, you know, the challenge in front of him. So I think it'd be a real shame for that to us to preemptively remove that. To, in essence, you know, a team that is now playing well, to use an analogy, to essentially fold the team at that time, seems a little bit harsh and unnecessary, like, you know, the old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Maybe it was broke, but is it being fixed? And if we, you know, if we just vote on Option 2 tonight, there's a few things that I think you need to be aware of what that represents. CAO Hurdle did not confirm that there would be members of the public involved any further. Currently, the Taxi Commission is, well, I use the word civilian oversight body. It's an arm's-length body by members of the community that have a steep learning curve when they join. And I think the governance model's problem is what everybody's been saying, that it turns over every year. That actually could be, that actually could be fixed. What I think the fair thing to do is to give the current commission the time to finish their year's work, and then make the decision at that point. Also, whatever decision we make, it's for, the people that are assuming liability and responsibility for the taxis is the next, is the next council, right? So if we make this decision tonight, when we all know it's not, it's not, it doesn't have, it doesn't trigger the lame duck clause of the bylaw, but it is actually a major financial decision that affects, you know, the taxi industry greatly. And we're making it with six outgoing council members tonight. So I think, I don't think that is compatible with transparency either. Mr. Dowzer spoke to some of the improvements, some of the, demonstrated this tonight, caused a change of heart in myself. So I'd like to ask staff, and I'd like them to answer this question, and this question only, and that is, if, because it wasn't in the original council direction, what effect does the positive changes being achieved by the current commission, as reported tonight, what effect would that have on the, on the city's, on the staff analysis of the situation?
Okay, so before that question, CAO Hurdle wanted to respond to something else that you suggested. So I'm going to have CAO Hurdle the chance to respond to that, and then to answer the question. CAO Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. I think I do have a responsibility to provide council with information, even if it's a little bit broader than a question that's been asked. So I will gladly take this opportunity. When the question was asked about members of the public being on the working group, I think it's fair to say that we usually have members of the public that sit on the working group. We usually bring terms of reference for council to approve that has a list of representation. We haven't done that yet, because really, we need to figure out first if there's an interest from council in moving in that direction. And we would take the next year to actually do this work. So to reassure you that we would be following this process. As far as the report and what it has addressed, it has addressed exactly what council asked us to address. And I'm looking at the clause right now, the "be it therefore resolved" clause, that speaks to options to incorporate the licensing, regulating, and governing of the owners and drivers of taxi cabs within municipal services and under city councils oversight. It does not ask staff to do an evaluation of which model is best to deliver the service, and we have not done that. We have not taken on a forensic review of the Taxi Commission. There have been positive changes at the Taxi Commission, absolutely, and staff did mention that to council, actually, in a report brought forward to council in February 15, 2022, when we proposed an agreement, a service-level agreement between the City of Kingston and the Taxi Commission for the administration of the rideshare bylaw. So city staff already recognized some of those positive changes to respond to the question. I think if the, I think the issue really comes down to a political issue, to be frank. The difference is, if this service is managed by the city, council as a whole makes the decision in terms of the bylaws, in terms of the fee, and the service oversight. And that's how the structure would work. If the service continues to be managed by the commission, then there is a counselor that is appointed. That's how the structure is different. From an operating and administrative point of view, from a staff point of view, we do not have a preference, because we do not make the decisions on the fees. We do not get the complaints from the public. You receive those as counselors. And whether the service is administered internally or externally, we would continue to work with our partners. And that's why you have a consider report and not a recommend report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Stroud, you have 45 seconds on the call.
Thank you. So I think there's two things to highlight if we go down this path. One is we, we 13 here tonight are assuming responsibility for all future issues to do with taxis in Kingston. Tonight, we're making that decision. And six of us aren't going to be here for that liability when it hits, when it hits council. That's point number one. Point number two is, currently, we have members of the public that sit as taxi commissioners with a taxi commission that's making great strides, and that would be replaced by a working group with maybe one or two members of the public appointed by nominations, I suppose. That's not the same as a taxi commissioner. So the accountability is being shifted 100% onto the shoulders of council, rather than the commission with one counselor appointee. That is a huge difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Bo.
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, just to follow up Counselor Stroud's comments, very good comments there. I'm in complete agreement with them. This is something where I don't think we actually need to make a decision on this tonight. I think this is something where, you know, it makes sense to wait and see how the commission actually plays out with their new changes coming. This is something that if the commission fails in the future, or if future counselors or councils decide, they can always bring it in-house at that time. So having seen the change in the governance structure, having seen the great strides that they've made, including the community members as part of that, I feel like it's actually something where we have to give them the chance to let this play out. We don't need to make a knee-jerk reaction right now to pass complaints. If we were doing any type of change, the first thing we would do is say we have to give that change long enough to actually be properly evaluated before we make another decision to make another change. So those changes have not had time to be fully fleshed out. They have not had time to be fully implemented and/or measured. Commissioner Hurdle said something in her- Commissioner Hurdle said something in her advice to council, which was, you know, staff did exactly what we asked them to do in this case. So maybe in the future, maybe we asked the wrong question. Maybe we, we got a consider report, but what we didn't ask was, what are the details that need to go with it to actually provide enough information to know whether bringing this in-house makes sense or whether leaving it as-is makes sense? The other thing is, in something like this, it would also make way more sense to go out to the public and find out what they want us to, because once you bring it in-house, that's it, it's gone. It's, there's, there's no, there's no opportunity, really, in my opinion, to go back from that. So unless a whole bunch of councillors have canvassed their constituents on this and have that knowledge that they, they want to share, has the public really been consulted on this? Does the average person really even know that there's consideration tonight to bring this into the city? And if not, then what I would say is, we don't need to make this decision right now. We should go with the status quo, leave it as-is, and perhaps as people are out there doing, you know, events in the community or wherever, or as whatever the next council is, can, can ask for further consultation with the public before we make this decision, because Counselor Stroud makes a very valid point that, you know, some people won't be around to see how this plays out, and once this decision's made, it's going to be very hard to walk it back. So I would advise that we let the commission continue with its good work. We've seen those significant strides, and basically, at this point, give it some time to play out and essentially keep the status quo up until the end. And if, if worse comes to worse, a year from now or two years from now, whoever's on that next council still has the ability to bring it in-house. So we don't need to make that decision tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor McLaren?
Thank you. Just some quick questions based on what has just been said. Can the next council reverse this?
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, and it doesn't require two-thirds either.
And would it be relatively easy or is it a difficult thing? In other words, will the work that we've initiated today make it very difficult, or will it be just a simple, "Let's stop this"?
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I think it depends on the, the timing, Counselor McLaren. So if the next council was to wait a number of months, because we do have to provide a notice in terms of next steps, so as part of option number two, we would have to provide a notice of the intent to, for the city to withdraw. So with that would come some next steps. So if the next council was to make that decision fairly quickly, I would say no, it wouldn't have significant implications. But if it was to wait a number of months, because the transition period is a year, so if it was to wait a number of months, then yes, because we would start to slowly transition the things over into a city process.
Okay. And if I recall from the presentation, it would take only about another month and a bit to do the, the work that they're doing right now to finish it off. So in one month, it wouldn't be too difficult, but if we were to wait several months, or if the next council were to wait several more months, it would be increasingly difficult over time. Is that correct?
Thank you, Anthony. So if I understand, I just want to make sure I understand your question correctly. If council tonight was to vote for option number two, can the next council undo that and undo that fairly quickly? So the answer is yes, it can, as long as it does it fairly soon in the term. If it waits months, because we would have to look at things like the current lease and how do we end that lease term that's in place with the Taxi Commission, so there are a number of more, I would say, legal elements that we would need to look into and that we would start to work on as time goes on. So it could be undone, but the sooner, obviously, the better to try to minimize any kind of impact.
Okay. And a follow-up to that, if council were to, a future council were to decide that they want to see the development of this work that's being, that's being done right now and its fruit, could we delay the transition from next September, say, to next October or even another year?
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, from a, I'm going to say, an operational and administration perspective, I think yes, we could, from a legal perspective, though I'm not entirely sure if there's anything under the legislation that would prevent us from doing that. So I, I am going to turn to my legal colleague, Mr. McLeod, who's on, who's on the line here, and he should be able to answer that. I know he's been heavily involved with this file.
Mr. McLeod.
So I've got the statute up here, and if I understand the question correctly is, if I understand the question correctly, it is whether there can be a short delay within the one year. The statute reads that participating with this power that wishes to withdraw shall give at least one year's notice, but there isn't a process of then, once you've given the notice, to amend the notice. So I think, if I understand the question correctly, while there, and again, there is no stated process to suspending withdrawing the notice, but it is a notice of an intention to do something a year from now. So if council wished to give the notice at a different point in time and pick a length of time that is more than one year, that is acceptable under the statute. And I'm just going to ask the councillor if I answered the question correctly.
Yes, I think if I understood you correctly, we can choose one year or longer, but we should choose that at this time and not at a later date. Is that correct?
That would be the clearest reading of the statute. Yes, it does say at least one year.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Chappell?
Fellow councillors, I can tell you that the delegations in support of the Taxi Commission are absolutely correct. There's been a great deal of successful and transformative change in this last year. With transformative change in our policies and procedures, we've installed the foundations of good governance, which will lead the commission going forward. But let's address an issue that was not mentioned in the report. Council entrusted the commission unanimously with the regulation of TNCs, and I, and thanks to the leadership of the commission, we quickly secured an agreement with Uber. In fact, our agreement with Uber restricts drivers from using their platform to being only Kingston residents and prevents weekend warriors from the GTA in Ottawa entering our community during peak periods like Homecoming and New Year's Eve. Through seeking input from the traditional taxi companies, the commission ensured further leveling of competition of the rideshare businesses and offered better services to our residents. In terms of public safety, the residents of Kingston demand it, and the commission delivers. Residents want to know when their grandma calls a taxi or Uber, they'll be safe. The Kingston area Taxi Commission is the regulator for the industry, and we proactively inspect vehicles, award fines, and suspend licenses for bad behavior. It is a responsibility we take very seriously. Unlike the city bylaws' complaints-based system, we offer proactive enforcement and inspections in addition to responding to complaints. Supporting public safety, the commission has mobilized, modernized its systems, and customers' concerns are now sent directly to the commission and not filtered through the taxi stand. Complaints, for the first time in the history of the commission, are fully transparent and acted upon swiftly. Counselor Hutchison may recall recent communication with Commissioner Dousher regarding a driver from Modern Taxi and an upset cyclist. In his own correspondence with the commission, he commended, he commented that he was unaware of our active investigation procedures and resolution processes. Further, in late June, a crisis happened in our community where a female was assaulted by a TNC driver. At a critical point, the commission was highly responsive and helped conclude the driver was an illegal and unregulated operator. The driver was reported to have been charged August 5th, and the commission demonstrated its responsiveness and communicated effectively with the community and reaffirmed confidence in the industry. The commission has undergone significant change in its culture, all because we settled to do so. You heard that tonight. This evening, you heard about the strategic planning process we undertook and set priorities to modernize the commission to better serve stakeholders and the public. We highlighted achievements for you in January, and not one of my colleagues inquired with me, your council representative on the commission, for additional insights. Then in May, we heard and debated about the frustrations over past commissions. Well, I have good news for you. Those commissions are no longer present, and today's commission has accomplished transformative change that should be celebrated. Mr. Stensel was right. Like KEDCO, we should be celebrated. Yet council doesn't seem very willing to celebrate the accomplishments of our commission and regulatory body in our community. In all fairness, I'm not surprised, but because our lives are busy, I get it. In fact, my own employment responsibilities have left me on the sidelines for next term, and I will miss our debates. But as I pointed out to council in May, the lack of interest in the commission is evidenced by the absence of requests from council and staff to discuss the renewed governance and positive support for the industry is deafening. So if anyone picked up the phone, we could have had a great conversation, and we'd be celebrating those successes. So I, I just want to bring something forward that I think is very interesting for, talking about celebrating successes, and speaking of KEDCO, I'd like to draw your attention to the handouts I'm circulating, and I apologize, I'm not technically savvy to have it online, but I had to run these off quickly. What I have before you is something that the public would perceive as a conflict. The CEO of Helper, who is promoting the fact that his company is an unlicensed TNC working in partnership with the City of Kingston. If a member of the public were to go to the Helper website, it would see that KEDCO logo prominently displayed, which reinforces this perception. So in my opinion, the city is conflicted if we chose to disband the commission. I also suggest that the four council representatives serving on KEDCO bar are in conflict supporting the unregulated TNC, but ultimately, that is their decision to make. In fact, I spoke with the city's integrity commissioner yesterday, and he's given me the impression that there is merit in my concerns. So individuals have to consider their own perceived conflicts this evening, and council has a choice.
30 seconds.
So my choice, hearing the presentations by council tonight, I'd like to move forward a deferral motion with regards to this, to allow this, this commission to finish its good work and allow an opportunity for staff to come back with greater answers as to the comparative analysis of what services are being provided versus what the city can provide.
Okay. So we have a motion to defer moved by Counselor Chappell, seconded by Counselor Stroud, that council defer report number 22-241 in order for staff to review, amend, and report back by Q3 2023 on the substantive governance and operational changes implemented by the Kingston area Taxi Licensing Commission since 2021 through direct consultation with the commission members appointed by council, elected members representing the City of Kingston, a loyalist township, commission staff, and transportation network companies under regulation during the 2021 to 2023 period of review to afford a direct comparison of current services being provided and proposed in-house services. Okay. So the motion to defer is on the floor. Remember that debate is respected time, place, or purpose, and time is restricted to one minute. Anyone want to speak to the motion to defer? Counselor Carley?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, I can support the motion. I think my record would show that every time we've asked for more information pertinent to a file, whether I feel inclined one way or another, I'll vote for it, and that's what the intent is here. And I think Counselor Stroud and Bohm have made that point earlier in the evening, so I can support it.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud?
Yeah. The missing information that was alluded to by Mr. Dousher and the previous delegate is some of that information, the information that CEO did admit was not part of the council direction from the motion that passed earlier and therefore was not considered. I think it needs to be considered. This new information from Counselor Chappell about this unlicensed TNC that's associated with KEDCO, I think we need to digest that information as well. And I think my earlier comments about how six of us are outgoing council members, that maybe, but the deferral also will achieve the, you know, that the decision will be made by the council that will bear the, the weight of the implications. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the motion to defer? Counselor Doherty?
I, I can support the motion to defer. Lot of rich conversations today. You certainly gave me lots to think about. And giving this current commission one year to continue their work may be the right move and certainly a good point that we're making decisions for the next council. But I wonder if we could include in this deferral research on the expanding the terms of the commission members.
Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Could we, could we put the wording of the motion to defer back up, please? Okay. So I guess my question to staff is, given the current wording, would, would a review of, of the potential length of term for members of the Taxi Commission, would that be included in this analysis, or is that something that should be directly stated in the motion to CEO Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I think if that's something that's very specific that council's looking for, probably be best to include it, just because we're going to have a significant change in councillors for the next term and would want to make sure that doesn't get lost. I do want to point out, though, that my understanding, and I will turn to my legal colleagues to jump in with any other information if I'm wrong here, but my understanding is that the Taxi Commission is responsible for their own bylaw and their composition. Council would not have a say in that. So I just want to make sure that that's clear for council, even though we bring information, council does not have a say. That's the whole point of having a separate entity.
So thank you for that clarification. I think, given that, I don't think it would be appropriate to put that as a staff direction in this case. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to defer? Counselor Hutchison?
I want to speak against the deferral, because just as the CEO said, once the commission is beyond the control of the city and council, it is beyond. That has been part of the problem for a long time, longer than I've been on council. And what goes on there is sort of a fiefdom of its own. We have input into people that are on it, but not the governance of it. And there have been questions about that governance, from ex-commissioners, people that were on the commission before, and this, people that are on the commission now want to blame the people before, and the people before are trying to blame those commissioners. I'm asking you, put a stop to this and make it into a system that actually can be perceived by the public to be doing their good. And so I think it's not appropriate to defer this. We've heard about plenty about this, okay? Not only the last two or three years, but before that.
Okay. So you're at one minute, Counselor Hutchison. And next, this is Counselor Hill.
Thank you. This is just to time. So given, I think it was Q3, would that not exceed the term of the current commission?
Sorry, Counselor Hill. Could you just repeat that?
Given, I'm looking at time here. So if you look at the, at Q3 2023, would that not exceed the current term of the current commission? Wouldn't it be a different commission altogether by that point? I'm just, I'm just more worried about how do we do that consultation with a commission that's heading out the door?
Yes. So my understanding is that there would be new commission members that would be appointed this coming November, which would then be in place for 2023. So I think your question is, which, which commission members would be consulted by staff in this work? Is that your question, Counselor Hill? I'm not sure if staff have an answer for that. CEO Hurdle?
Thank you. And through Mr. Mayor, while I'm assuming we would work with the next members, since a replacement would happen very shortly in November, I mean, we, we would have a chance to probably have some conversation at a high level, but we wouldn't have time to do all of the engagement and consultation within basically a month or so, a couple of months.
Counselor Hill?
Well, so that, I mean, that, this is that, the muddy waters, I think, that we've been talking about, just kind of continued to be muddied. So I think- So I think I could, I would not support the deferral.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the deferral? Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. And with respect to the direction, it strikes me that the head of the commission has just spoken to us about their views, and so we know how they feel. And I think most of us have heard from the companies and the other stakeholders for many years now. So I think we already know the information that's being sought. It's time to make that decision now, I think.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Chappell, you have the last word. One minute.
Thank you, worship. The purpose of the Q3 was just to ensure that what we set up in the structure and the governance of the Taxi Commission is transferable to whoever you choose to appoint to this commission. And that's really what's going to be demonstrated by having that timeframe. And then when the report comes back with information on the structure and the functioning of the commission and the good things that are being done with the community, even the taxi brokers suggested tonight that they've been very happy with us over the last five, six months. So if that continues, and then you have an option in the next council to make that decision as to whether you're comparing apples to apples of the two options. And I think that is more prudent than making a knee-jerk reaction tonight. So that is why I put in that Q3, just to answer councillor Hill's question. And the structure's in place. It's not who's on the commission that matters, it's how the commission's going to function.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Chappell. Okay, so we will call the vote then on the motion to defer. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries by a vote of 10 to 3. Councillor McLaren, Hutchinson, and Hill opposed. Okay, moving on to report number 84 from Planning Committee.
Moved by councillor Hill, seconded by deputy mayor Hill, that report number 84 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, approval of application for zoning bylaw amendment to 1200 Princess Street. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Report number 85 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Bohm, that report number 85 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there are two clauses. Would anyone like them separated? Okay, so we'll separate them. Number one, public notice policy amendments. All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Hutchinson?
Sorry, just a, probably a small thing. The, in the notice policy, we're on MNPA, right? The, we're just reading through, they just talk about seizure of personal property there. And it talked about what the notice requirements are, and who gets notice that this is going to take place. There's no mention of the person whose personal property is being auctioned. We're auctioning off personal property. And I wonder if that's an oversight that should be covered off. That's all. That's why I brought it up. And maybe it's covered by the tax department, I don't know.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you for that question, councillor. That information's covered in the municipal act, has nothing to do with the public notice policy.
Nothing to do with the public auction?
That's right. That's right. It's been deleted. It's part of the municipal act.
It's already covered.
It's not there. Yeah, it's all recovered.
Okay. That's, I thought maybe that was the case. Thanks.
Okay, is there anybody else on clause one? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause two, adoption of new procurement bylaw. Councillor Chappell?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm very concerned about raising the delegated authority to $100,000 and would propose that we retain it at $50,000, because there are a number of issues with that in play. We have staff being able to make decisions on consulting projects that often fall under $100,000, $50,000, and that will only increase substantively when you go to $100,000. So, giving a firm example, the Community Benefits Consulting Project that we just recently had, a planning committee that was $47,500 was HST, under the $50,000 mark. Did it go to competitive bid? I have no idea. But it was something that could be pre-approved. So my concern is, we are basically opening up the floodgates during this very uncertain economic time, where we don't know the full impact of our tax base and interest rates on homeowners in the city, and the costs keep rising. I think we need to be more diligent in understanding how we're spending money. Further to that, I would propose that, and I didn't have the motion written tonight, because obviously there's a lot of things on my mind, but I would like to propose that anytime staff are looking to have a consultant, that it should come to council for a rationalization as to why we are going to hire a consultant. And there's for two reasons. One, to ensure that the staff have all the skills and all the tools they need to do the work in-house. And if we continuously see consultants being required, then maybe we should be investing in our staff. And I think that is really important. You just can't keep flogging off a decision point to a consultant. You know, we paid $48,000 in our first term to have a sidewalk consultant, when I thought that every member of council who just recently walked the election circuit could have assessed those sidewalks if we were given a little bit of training, and given that $48,000 back to the residents. So I didn't have enough time to go through this. Unfortunately, I was away when this was discussed at the meeting, and I would prefer just to have a deferral for one council period, so that I come back with a motion that would basically negate the $100,000, bring it back to 50, and have a policy in place regarding the hiring of consultants for the city of Kingston. So just one week, so a motion, or one council meeting, the next meeting, have this one on the table.
Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Just wondering if staff could provide a brief rationale for the change in the spending limit from 50,000 to 100,000. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, just to clarify, in terms of the 100,000 threshold, it actually plays two different roles within this proposed bylaw. The first one is the threshold of when we determine whether or not we need to go to market, so have a competitive process. So right now, our existing bylaw requires that anything over 50,000, we actually have to do a competitive process, put out a tender or an RFP to market. And we're proposing moving that up to 100,000 for a couple of reasons. One, in terms of the risk of the procurement, the risk of making sure we're getting the best value for our dollars against the cost of doing an open-market competition. So we continually try to evaluate that benefit, the cost of the resource to actually do the process, to go out for market, the timing of that, versus the risk of, are we going to get the best value for our dollar if we do or we don't go to market? And so certainly looking at benchmarking across other municipalities, 100,000 seemed to be certainly a threshold for that. The other piece of that that I can just comment on, and some information that we learned, particularly with some of our conversations with Kingston Construction Association, to consider, is that what we were hearing is, particularly with the busyness of the market and the work that they have out there, they are going to think twice before they respond to an RFP, particularly for a smaller dollar amount. So if they have something that is not a formal RFP, between 50 and 100, they're going to go for that work before they're going to do a whole RFP process for the city of Kingston. So they said, you need to consider that in terms of the response rate that we're getting to our RFPs. So that's the one threshold. The other threshold, then, that follows from that is the reporting threshold to council. And so right now, council recalls, under our current bylaw, we report anything over 50,000 in terms of that's been under delegated authority. We've moved that to 100,000, just so it aligns with the same process for us. We can move that back to 50, but it does then involve a different process for us, just in terms of bringing that information together, because it's no longer just what's going to market, it would now also be the 50 to 100. So there are two different aspects of that, in terms of that we've built into the bylaw around that 100,000 threshold.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, did I give the chair to you for that?
I believe you did.
Thank you.
But I was nodding off there, so, but I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor O'Shroff?
Point of order.
Point of order?
I thought councillor Chappell moved a deferral.
So I interpreted that as a call asking for deferral, but not a formal putting of a motion to defer forward. So if I misinterpreted, then that's fine. I didn't see that, I didn't see-
No, I'm just asking if he moved a deferral. I guess he didn't.
Okay, I don't believe that he did. I believe that he was just asking for one. Councillor O'Shroff?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Patterson. Yeah, this is, I do appreciate councillor Chappell's comments, and I do think that this is worth a long, not a long look at, but just to understand this. And I appreciated Director Kennedy's, or CFO Kennedy's, sorry, comments. I have had conversations with her, and she's really, I had good conversation with her at length about this, and I understood it then, and I understood it less tonight. So I want to maybe ask you to help us understand, because it's really important. I was asked a few questions from a constituent about this topic, too, and so I did ask you, when you talk about the thresholds there, can you explain again the difference between RFP and, was it quotations, or what are the two categories, again, that we talked about? Can you explain the difference of those two categories and why it's actually important? Because I know as a contractor, I, not that I would get this work, but I want contractors to, because you learned a lot talking to the KCA. And that was really important to me, because I know that KCA is a great organization, and they explained how we can do things better. Is that what you shared a bit with me?
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct. So we did have some conversation with KCA, particularly around the bylaw. There was generally support for the bylaw, but some of the feedback and where the discussion went was more to the process-type pieces. So how we will implement the bylaw and what that means in terms of sort of on-the-ground processes. To your question, councillor, and I think what you're referring to is, because we did discuss with you the difference between an RFP and a tender.
Thank you.
Yes. So those are both processes where we are going out to market, and so there is a competitive bidding process for the market. The tender is strictly on price. So on a tender, lowest price wins. On a request for proposal, an RFP, there can be other evaluation criteria besides price. So it can be things like the experience of the firm coming in, the methodology that they are proposing. The bylaw has some new principles in it around sustainability, social procurement, and so that will give us the opportunity to perhaps include some of those elements in our evaluation process. So is there criteria sort of around green procurement or that, that we could build in with that? So it gives us the opportunity to look at more than just price when we're using an RFP.
Yeah, through Mayor Patterson. So that's helpful, and I, and as a businessperson, I think that that's, and my conversations with another contractor on this, there was concerns that, I think that the tendency was to go to RFP more. And so perhaps, is that going to continue? Is that fair? Is that budget-wise as well? Is there, can there be a balance so that we're getting the best prices as well?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, that's a good question, and we've, it's interesting, we had this conversation, I'm going to say, with council probably about 10 or 12 years ago, where I would say that the city of Kingston was leading the pack in terms of the usage of RFPs. And we were getting pushback from the vendor community, because it does take a significant amount of time to respond to an RFP. There's a lot of information that we ask. And at the time when we reached out to some of my colleagues to see what they were doing, I would say we were leading the pack. Today, I think it's much more consistent in terms of the use, because there's so much more now that we want to evaluate in terms of value for money than just the dollar price itself. Having said that, and knowing the effort that it takes on the other side, on the vendor side, to prepare some of these, one of the things that we're doing in this new bylaw is expanding the ability to use a pre-qualification process or a qualified vendor list. And so that's a process where we would go out and we would do sort of that first half of what we would do in RFP around the ability of the vendor, what their company looks like, some of the non-price criteria. And we would come up with a qualified vendor list that we would then use to go back out in terms of then just looking at price. So it reduces some of the effort for these vendors, because they can do that one piece upfront, but they don't have to do it continually each time.
Thanks for that. I think it's really important to hear that and to understand that as well. I also, I know that in, within the procurement, you brought up, and I think we mentioned at committee level, too, you know, how counselors are guarded or guided on not influencing, you know, bids or directing that. And so the concern that I was, what was brought to my attention was, you know, how, could you point us to how that also is reflected for city employees, that there is no conflict of interest as well? And you were able to do that for me, and I'm wondering if you can do that, show council that the complete integrity is there at all levels, so that contractors can be assured of fairness and opportunity.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we have built that specifically into a couple of sections within the bylaw, and I'm actually going to turn that question over to our manager of procurement, Brent Funnel, who is virtually with us tonight, and he can refer to those specific sections.
Mr. Funnel, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. That's a great question, and this is something that we in procurement are always thinking about, the integrity of the process and the conflicts that may come with it. Section 6 of our procurement bylaw, which in the agenda is on page 66, speaks to city conduct and conflicts of interest. This is something that is definitely a good point of interest and would definitely come in through training of these protocols. There will be policies that will be written that will very much reflect this, and it's a type of process that is ongoing and is forever evolving. The conflicts are getting greater and greater as days and weeks and months go on. But the section 6 definitely is something that will be addressed pending the approval of this bylaw, and the training process will definitely happen within staff through either e-learning or through departmental meetings. Thank you.
One more question, Mayor Patterson? That's very helpful. Thank you for that and knowing. So what can council expect, then? So you understand this, where we can expect that you are writing or rewriting the protocols to ensure this, and there's work being done. Is that something that we will be able to see in the next year? Or what is the expectation?
Yes, again, through you, Mayor. We'll be doing benchmarking as we did with the rest of the bylaw. We'll be taking a look to see what other municipalities are doing in terms of their conflict, in terms of their training processes.
Yes.
This is something that, the decision really hasn't necessarily been made in terms of how it'll be rolled in, but definitely training and PD will definitely be a part of this, because there needs to be the elimination of, to mitigate the risk of any type of conflict or any type of personal gain that someone may be getting or through a family member. There's a lot of different ways that we could be viewing this, so there will definitely be some education as to the specifics on this topic.
Thank you very much. I'm encouraged to hear that, and I look forward to that happening. Thank you, Mayor Patterson.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you to Ms. Kennedy. Not to get caught up on numbers, but I do think the spirit of councillor Chappell's question around the $50,000 is worth exploring for another moment, just briefly. I'm wondering, when did we set that as the threshold initially? Because perhaps if we look back to that time and then adjust for inflation, it'd be around 100,000 today.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, back in 2006 was the last overhaul of the- So yes, back in 2006 was the last overhaul of the bylaw. We've had a couple of changes since then, but not to the threshold. So I didn't go back to look specifically at what the changes were then, but my guess is that's when the $50,000 would have been set, back in 2006. So you're correct, doing the inflation piece, it probably would be fairly close to the $100,000 mark.
All right, so that makes me happy. And one little change that we made earlier in the term that I'm not sure if people remember is we see the total of those delegated authority spendings, which was helpful for me to increase the transparency, so I have no issue with what has been brought up previous. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud?
I like, I like where Counselor Kylie was going with using math at city council. I really like that. So it made me Google $2,006 today, three words, and it comes up and it tells you. I don't know if this is US or Canadian. So $10 in 2006 is $14.69 today, according to this website, which I should probably, you know, look a little further. But if, if that's true, that's useful because that's 46.9% increase in 16 years, in the 16 years Counselor Hachison and Counselor Osannick have been on council. So that's actually only, that's almost a 50% increase, but it's not 100% increase. So by that logic, really, we should be raising the threshold to 75,000. So rather than deferring or quibbling about this, maybe we should just amend the bylaw to 75,000 so that it's exactly indexed, almost exactly indexed to inflation from the last time we set the threshold. So Ms. Kennedy, what do you think of that idea?
Ms. Kennedy?
So first of all, counsel, I'm going to hire you in the finance department for being able to do that so quickly. But through you, Mr. Mayor, the only other piece that I would add to that is that, and this actually goes back to a comment that a previous counselor made tonight, is that we also have growth in our budgets. And so in addition to inflation, I think we also have to have that factor of growth. So we have grown as a municipality, we've grown in the, in the dollar value procurements that we're doing, and I think it again goes back to that risk. So the difference between going to market at 75,000 versus going to market at 100,000 and are we gaining more value by that extra effort that we put in, but also that the vendors are putting in between that $25,000 difference?
Well, is there any way, if we're going to stick with math, is there any way to quantify the value that we get in that second aspect you're just mentioning?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be difficult to quantify. I can certainly say that we, from a staff point, we would definitely be spending that, those extra dollars in terms of, it's quite a process to go to market. But to be honest, my bigger concern is, is the level of effort in the market and that it would continue to limit the responses that we're getting back. I think that would be my biggest concern around that.
Right, so what I'm hearing is that the, maybe the number one, there's multiple reasons, as you spoke to earlier, for raising the threshold, but the most important is this pushback we're getting from, from the providers of being reluctant to bid on the smaller bids, between 50 and 100,000, for example, because of the extra effort. And staff, to add to that, staff also has to process all that extra information in the RFP. So everybody, so I can see why, I can see why from a staff perspective, it makes sense, but you can't ignore the other side of the coin, which is transparency and keeping a line of sight on our, on our expenses, which is what constituents tend to complain about, right? When we lose track of the money that we're spending. And so from the point of view of a counselor, you want, this is where Counselor Chappell's coming from, you want to be able to know, you know, why we're hiring consultants and you want, you want to be, to keep that oversight function, right? To have the, those consultant decisions come before us. So I'm, so I'm going to run out of time, but I have to decide whether I want to amend the bylaw, which is very cumbersome, or simply just defer to the next council meeting, as Counselor Chappell suggested, for the purpose of, for so staff can, how do we put it? So staff can consider. I don't think I can come up with this at this hour on the, so I guess, I guess that's it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to choose to pass, I'm gonna have to vote against the recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this item? Okay, recall the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by vote 11 to 2. Counselor Stroud and Chappell opposed. Okay. We also have report number, report number 86 from Planning Committee.
Moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Hill, that report number 86 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there are two clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? Counselor Chappell?
Just point of clarification, I've lost my notes, is, what is the address? 86 is 998 Highway 15?
So clause one is approval of application for official plan and zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan and subdivision at 998 Highway 15.
Thank you. I put forward an amendment for this proposal and I submitted it to the clerk.
Okay, so first, we're dealing with them separately. So this is just clause one then. It is on the floor. Counselor Chappell was asked to speak to clause one and has put forward a motion to amend. Can we just see that, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. I put forward a motion to amend and if we could look at this slide and then the next slide after that.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Point of order.
If I could just clarify, if an amendment has been put forward at Planning Committee and loses, can it come to council to amend something that has already been lost on the same motion? How does that work? Because we saw this already a few nights ago.
Mr. Clerk, can I see your moment? Okay, so, so no, it does not require reconsideration when it's, when it's presented in one forum and then re-presented in a different. So the motion to amend is in order.
Okay, fair enough.
Counselor Chappell?
Yeah, thank you. This, it was a very controversial development and with respect to the land, it's so close to the waterfront, the 30-meter setback is really supposed to be pristine nature. It's not supposed to be usable as parkland. And so with these additional houses being removed, what it will do in fact is help to extend an already existing parkland that the city owns north of the subdivision and allow generations and future generations to enjoy the access to the Cataracui River as well. It also moves houses further away from the sightlines and therefore does not impede the designation from the UNESCO World Heritage Site. And so although this failed at planning and a 3-3 tie vote, I thought it was important for council to have an opportunity to discuss this. And so I have a diagram. Sorry, I didn't mean to catch the clerk off guard there. And this is 120 meters from the provincially significant wetland, which is that marshy-looking area along the green line to the left hand of the side. And if we followed that, there really shouldn't be any building even between the red line and the waterway. The current proposal has buildings all along the blue portion, 30 meters in, with a four-foot public path. And this four-foot public path doesn't meet the minimum requirements for a pathway in the city of Kingston, which is three meters. So I just think we can do better as a city and if we remove that particular segment of homes and allow the development to go ahead, I think the city would be in much better stead in the future for the residents of our community. And that's really what I wanted to discuss.
Okay, thank you. The motion to amend is on the floor. Counselor Osannick?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, so this amendment's asking to remove 20 homes, which is on the west side of Street B, which goes along the waterfront. This would be consistent with what Planning Committee and planning staff had done for the two subdivisions to the north, which is Riverview Way, which has the forest on the west side of Riverview Way, and also for what was originally Baxter Farm subdivision, which has Waterside Way. The Kingston, I guess that would be the Pittsburgh Township official plan, really showed the importance of when Highway 15, the west side of Highway 15 got developed in the future, that it would be a single loaded road all the way along the river for the reasons that Counselor Chappell just described, to have a clearer view of the river. And for this subdivision that we're approving tonight, we have houses on the west side of Street B, which is not named yet. And so we want to remove these 20 homes so that you have a clearer view of the river. It would also help with the view of, if you're actually on a boat of the Cataracui River when you're looking to the east to the subdivision, it just makes the houses, you know, further back because you don't have homes on the west side of Street B. And so that could help us retain our UNESCO designation for the Cataracui River. It also protects the wetlands. So for that picture that we showed, that aerial view, the red line was actually the 120-meter buffer. And you can see that we're not asking for 120-meter buffer. The environmental impact study showed that it's just 30 meters, so we've already lost all that protection for the wetland. You can see that the road is there, we're still going to have Street B within that 120-meter buffer. It just helps, you know, to give a little bit more of a buffer to the street edge there. I think those are all the points. Oh, then I do have a question. Oh, this is an amendment. I will have a question when we pass this or when we have the vote for the amendment to the original motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the amendment? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you and through you, I think I will ask Ms. Agnew a number of questions or whoever would like to take, take them concerning the application, just to clarify some of the comments that have been made. In the planning process, when there were restrictions on the height of the houses along Street B, as have been described, at 9.3 meters, if my memory serves me correctly, were any concerns brought up through Parks Canada, who kind of is our mediator with UNESCO?
Commissioner Agnew?
Yes, thank you and through you. So part of the detailed technical review, Counselor, as you indicated, it does get circulated to the different agencies, being the Conservation Authority and Parks Canada, when there's a development happening that's within that watershed or within that view corridor. So as part of that, working through that technical review, there are pieces that were put into the zoning bylaw to help maintain the integrity of that view. That's why there is a height limitation particularly at that part in order to be able to continue to protect the corridor itself, protect the UNESCO World Heritage Site. So that was all discussed through the technical review and incorporated into the amending bylaws presented.
Thank you. And to be super clear, that those agencies did not object to what was proposed through that bylaw?
Through you, your mayor, Mayor Patterson, that's correct. We do have a number of requirements that were provided through the technical review letters that were incorporated into, to the amendments that are before council this evening. I also just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Park is also joining the meeting remotely. Mr. Park, if you have anything else to add, please do so.
Mr. Park?
Thank you, Commissioner Agnew, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that all the conditions that were submitted by the Rita Waterway joint team, that's Cataracui Conservation Authority and the Rita Authority, all of those conditions were wrapped into the draft conditions of subdivision approval, which can be found in exhibit D of the report. All those conditions respect the natural heritage components, the official plan, meet all the requirements of both the Cataracui Conservation Authority as well as the ones of Parks Canada. Thank you.
Thank you, and a few more questions through you, Mayor Patterson. Mr. Park, can you also confirm that overall on the development proposal that we're seeing tonight, there's actually additional park space or amenity space than is required under the current zoning bylaw? I believe we need to have at least 5% and with the park that runs adjacent to the river at 6%. Is that accurate?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Counselor Kylie, the parkland dedication is in excess of the Planning Act requirement. That's 6%.
Okay, I'll be brief. Two more from me. Speaking of the park space, when we talk about the pathway that's running behind the houses, not only is it public, but is it in addition to the 30-meter setback from the waterway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Counselor Kylie, it is beyond the 30-meter setback.
All right, and then finally, in terms of people being able to access that naturalized space, can they access from both the south and the north park entrances? In other words, do the houses kind of fit in the middle, but there is park space on either end that would bring folks down to the river?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. There were access points at both the north and the south end of that street that would have access to the waterfront.
Thank you. So though I agree with the notions that the counselors have brought up about the importance of access and the heritage value, I think that through the review process that we've heard described and through the comments made by Mr. Park, that they've been addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Hill.
Thank you, Your Worship, and, you know, I agree with the comments coming from Counselor Kylie. You know, this has been more than adequately addressed in this, in this report. It's been supported by the various environmental organizations that are entrusted to protect this area. There were some concerns that were expressed about the fact that if you open it up to a one-side loaded street, that you're going to have too much access to a naturalized area, that the pathway actually works better in that regard in terms of limiting human access to those points because they're supposed to be protected areas. But also, you know, here we go again. You know, this is a quarry and I want to remind everybody that this is a quarry. So it's a quarry in the middle of a residential area. You know, there's, it's either going to remain a quarry, a scar on that particular area of the community, or it's going to get developed in a responsible way. We have to work with our developers and we have to recognize that, you know, on occasion, you have to meet them halfway. And part of that, you know, means that we have to give a little sometimes as well. Because I know it seems like making a profit at this table is a dirty word, but you know, our developers are not going to develop for free. They have to be able to make a profit, they have to be able to sell a product that is economically feasible for them. This is a very good trade-off. It has the support of all of our partners. It works in that community. It provides access, responsible access to citizens along that walkway. It's an extension of that walkway. So this is a, this is a perfectly reasonable plan and I really, really, you know, struggle with the fact that we're, you know, kind of debating this again. And I think the message we're sending to the development community is not a good one. So I can't support this amendment.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, just a quick question to staff. What we're approving tonight is just the draft plan approval, correct? So there's still many more phases for this to go through? Is that accurate?
Mr. Park?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor, it's actually a zoning approval as well as the draft plan of subdivision and you're correct, Counselor Bohm, they would still have to go through many phases of the draft plan conditions in order to get final approval.
Thank you, appreciate that answer. So with that in mind, we know that something is going to be built there. I know, as most people know and have heard, the city has a very low vacancy rate again and it needs housing. Even, even if we approve this tonight, which I'm sure it will be approved tonight, it's still going to be many- going to be many years likely before we see that fully built out. So we struggle at times. In the past, we've struggled to approve 1,600 housing units. And I asked at that meeting, how many other developments would it take to make that up? Well, you've now got one with 241 homes in it, and that still needs to be built. So if we are serious about creating and reducing the housing crisis that we're in, we've got to build houses, and they take time. So we can't, you know, stop every single subdivision and literally just create barriers to adding homes in the area, and then with one hand do that, and then with the other say, hey, we're serious. We're really going to nix this housing crisis. We're going to fix things, and we've got a plan, we've got a task force. And you know what probably came out of that was build more houses, provide more places for people to live. But anymore, it's like, where are we supposed to put them? We can't build up. Somebody will appeal that. We can't build out. Somebody will appeal that. I mentioned earlier, we haven't tried down yet. Maybe that's where we have to go. But now we're talking about in a quarry, the swimming hole that was there that was beloved by the community and also illegally used for all those years, it is gone. It's not coming back. You've now got a pit. There were some concerns from the community, and so it was deferred a little bit at planning to kind of get some more information. Came back with the answers for that. Of course, we'll never be able to satisfy everybody there, but there's another 240 homes that can potentially be built there and should be built there, because there's nothing else that's going in there. And again, as councillor Hill said, if developers operated for free and didn't turn a profit at all, we would cease to have developers, and then nobody would be building houses. So I know that we're at a point with this file where, you know, we're kind of still at the beginning, but I also want to ask one more question of staff. If we amend this with the wording on the floor right now, does the developer have the ability to just ignore what we amend and just basically appeal it based on planning rationale?
Mr Park.
Thank you. And through you, Mr Mayor, the applicant could appeal council's decision, even if it's an approval with the removal of these lots to the Ontario Land Management.
Okay, thank you for that answer. So there's an inherent risk in tinkering with this against staff's recommendation and against what the developer has proposed. There's a risk that what they could appeal is actually less than what we've gotten on the table here. And there's a risk that we get taken completely out of the process and have no option to bump it up to site plan or have any oversight going forward on this, and it just gets built. And with the way things have gone in the past, we've made some good headway. This developer in particular has, you know, shown a willingness to add things and listen to staff and residential concerns and provide answers. I don't think we want to get to the point where we tinker with things so much that developers just completely bypass us and go to the albat. But I think if we continue on the current path we're on, I think that's what's going to happen, is they'll just put their proposal in, the 90 days will expire, and we'll him and haw it, and meanwhile, they'll be off getting their planning approvals. Because it was mentioned earlier, all too often, we have to deal with the perception of it from the public. But realistically, what needs to be managed is what is actually acceptable from a planning perspective. And those two things often collide, but if we don't get, you know, a little bit more efficient and possibly cognizant of trying to make those two meet, developers are just going to start bypassing us. And it's really going to reduce the ability for this council or the next council to represent the citizens' concerns and to explain to them how the planning rationale works. And I think that would be a disservice to the community. But with the way things have gone, I wouldn't be surprised at all if developers just started doing that, because the word is out on the street. It is almost impossible to build anything in this city right now.
30 seconds.
And the fact that we have a housing crisis and developers are saying they can't build housing, I mean, most of us would think that that's odd, but it seems to be the case right now. Everywhere somebody tries to build it, the answer's no. But yet, we need houses. So if somebody has a better answer than that, I don't know. But this is a quarry that's not going to be used for anything else. So I would hope that people would vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just noting our time. It's 10:44. Can I have a motion to extend our meeting, please? Moved by councillor Osterhoff, seconded by deputy mayor Neil. Extend the meeting to finish the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, next on my list is councillor Osterhoff.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Patterson. I just would echo the words of councillor Bohm there, and I think it's really something that we need to recognize, and this is an opportunity to build homes. And restricting developers at this level is going to affect the profits, and they're not going to build. And so as councillor Hill said, the work's been done, and councillor Kylie, you know, and I think we can trust that, and this is an important project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you. I'd just like to refocus council a little bit on the facts of the amendment. We're discussing an amendment that, as councillor Ossanik said, would remove 20 luxury homes from the water side of Road B, near the water of the UNESCO site, the wetland, PSW. It's a little confusing, because there's the restrictions the CRCA helps us with, which is on the PSW, right, the provincially significant wetland. But then there's the whole Rito Corridor Landscape Strategy and the UNESCO World Heritage Site. And it's actually not really the same as our Heritage Committee rules, or the Heritage Act is completely different. I, as you recall, I am the council's representative on the Rito Corridor Landscape Strategy Steering Committee, and I've been the vice chair since I joined back in 2014. And this is the kind of thing we talk about. We talk about how to protect the views from the water and the landscape heritage aspect of the waterway from Kingston all the way to Ottawa, right? And so the way you read that, and it's sort of the way a heritage person, it's similar to the way a heritage person reads a heritage home, you know? You look down in a heritage district, you see a bunch of heritage homes, and you want to make alterations to one, like, how's that going to read on the street? Is it going to stick out like a sore thumb, or is it going to fit into the heritage character and so on? In the case of the Rito Corridor, it's really, this landscape strategy was put in place specifically because of development pressures. And where are the development pressures along the Rito? Well, they're in Kingston and Ottawa mostly. That's where all the development pressures are. This is where it comes into effect. Maybe that's why they wanted me, even as the rookie councillor in 2014, to be, you know, the vice chair of the committee. Maybe not, I don't know why, but they seemed really eager to have me there. And I think it's important that council know that this committee was not consulted about this particular development, and that Parks Canada was consulted, which is probably statutory, but the implementation of the landscape strategy doesn't seem to have been a consideration in this recommendation. So maybe I'll ask staff about that. Did staff, because there's often a city planner at these meetings, I don't know if they still go, but was the Rito Corridor Landscape Strategy a consideration in the crafting of this recommendation?
Thank you. And through you, Mr Mayor. Comments were provided by the Rito Waterway Development Review Team, which, as I mentioned earlier, is a combination of staff from both the CRCA as well as Parks Canada that oversee any development along the Rito Canal. And they had a series of 12 conditions, which they outlined, that they wanted included within any recommendation for approval for this development. And I can affirm that all 12 of those conditions, including landscape plans, tree preservation, heritage impact studies, historic canal consultation, are all included as conditions within the draft plan of subdivision, which can be found on Exhibit D of the report.
Thank you. So there's conditions that there'd be consultation, but it's silent on the presence of these 20 luxury homes. To the comments by the previous speaker about how, you know, this is saying no to development, there's still 221 homes that are going to be built here. And actually, no matter what we say tonight, there's going to be homes built in this quarry site, right? So like, that's really a disingenuous argument, saying that there's not going to be development here, if we remove the 20 homes that are right beside the water in conflict with the Rito Waterway Landscape Strategy and in conflict also with the environmental guidelines. It's, you know, there's been mitigation, like Commissioner Agnew said, with the lower roof lines and things like that, but it actually is, the correct answer is really to just keep it consistent along the water side of that one road, which follows the shoreline in all of the different subdivisions. It's fair, it's equitable, and it's compatible with all of the bodies if we pass the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor McLaren.
Thank you. I think it's important to counter some points that have been made here. There's a sort of a narrative going around that it's difficult to build in Kingston, or that we're not helping developers, or that we're not supporting developers. I'd just like to point out some numbers that I asked staff about a month and a half ago. We've approved 4,897 new units in this council. 3,589 of those have already been occupied. Last council was an above-average council, and we only approved 1,728. This is more, this is almost three times as many, which makes this council very likely the most development-friendly council in the history of Kingston. In addition to that, we have approved, sorry, we've approved two units as of right for any residential separated house. We've set the standard for pro-development and building in Kingston in the middle of a housing crisis. So the notion that it's difficult to build here, it's not. We've actually built an awful lot here, and we've contributed to solving the housing crisis by a lot more than any other council in Kingston's history. That narrative needs to stop, because it's just simply not true. But on the notion of this particular one, I'm going to have to listen to the district councillor on this one, because I think he knows it best on this one. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Neil.
Thank you very much. I'm glad the previous two speakers spoke up about the hyperbole that we're hearing around the horseshoe today. Developers can't develop in Kingston. I know, and it was a year ago, so I don't remember the exact number, but it seems to me that developers have approvals for, and correct me if I'm wrong, well over 1,000 approvals, where a developer could go out tomorrow and get a building permit, and they aren't, despite our low, low vacancy rate. Can you tell me what that figure is now, that is currently approvals, but even if you can't give the exact number, could you give an estimate of that?
So, so deputy mayor, it is almost 11 o'clock at night. I'm going to allow the
I appreciate that.
I'm going to allow the question, but I'm going to also ask that we focus on the item that's in front of us. So I'm going to allow this one question, and I'm going to ask you to then circle your comments back to what's in front of us, because we can debate housing all night, but I do think that we need to be focused on
The answer I was seeking would take a lot less time in this conversation.
The point is to preempt any more of this. Commissioner Agnew.
Thank you. And through you, your worship. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. Certainly, we have seen over time, and there has been a decline, especially over the last two to three years, of what was a pretty healthy inventory of approvals that weren't going to the development quick enough. We have seen a correction in that significantly in the last couple of years. But that said, there still would be some approvals that are sitting that have not yet gone to full application or building permit.
Thank you very much. And I will end my conversation just with a statement. Anybody, the councillors who said developers can't develop in Kingston, I invite you to attend some planning committee meetings, because we approve development at every meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we'll call the vote then on the motion to amend. All those in favor? That loses by a vote of five to eight. Councillor Stroud, councillor Ossanik, deputy mayor Neil, councillor Hudson, and councillor Holland in the minority. So we're now back to the staff recommendation. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. So we're now back to the staff recommendation as not amended. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, I'll try to be brief, but I do want to talk about this motion in terms of amendments that were made along the journey, because I think that if we polarize into development versus anti-development, which is unfortunately where this file has gone, and I'm going to keep it on this file, we miss the fact that committee did do good work, and they asked for a request change in the road, in the parks that I've already talked about. They did a deferral on a non-planning issue to get more information for residents. The district councillor, who I can see up on the screen there nodding along, worked tirelessly with residents to ensure that a number of considerations were addressed through the process, and it's not a perfect system, and no one's here to say that there can't be improvements to how we do planning. But I do think we need to, as much as possible, uphold the fact that work has been done through the system that we have, and if there are structural changes that need to be done through approval authorities, again, already mentioned, especially the local conservation authority that we have direct influence on, then can we please do it through those avenues and not on every single file? Again, this being a great example of using the system to improve it and then kind of getting bogged down on things that are beyond the actual file. So I'm happy to support it, and I want to recognize especially councillor Bohm, who did work with the residents, to see a number of things addressed through planning at the juncture, and we have it before us, and I think it should be an easy yes.
Okay, is there anybody else? Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. One question through you to staff, and it's about the landowner information package that these 20 luxury homes along the waterfront will receive. So they're going to receive them, it's going to be like with the purchaser, the lawyer will make sure it's a requirement in the land title registry. When someone sells one of the houses, one of these 20 houses along the waterfront, how does the new homeowner get the land information package? Because I believe the land information package is what's going to say you cannot have put a gate through your backyard, you know, into this natural area. You can't extend your backyard into this natural area. You can't cut down the trees behind your backyard in this natural area. So as the subdivision matures and people come and people go, how does the landowner information package get transferred to each homeowner? Thank you.
Mr Park.
Thank you. And through you, Mr Mayor. Because that landowner transfer package, information package, sorry, is going to be registered as a condition within the subdivision agreement, which in turn is registered on title against the lands. Anytime a sale of a lot within the subdivision takes place, that information is registered on title, so the homeowner would be made aware of that information package as part of their purchase.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to that, is that through their lawyer doing the land, the home sale, or is that through the real estate agent?
Thank you. And through you, Mr Mayor, my understanding through my own experience would be it would be through their lawyer as they do the title search on the property.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, number two, approval of application for zoning bylaw amendment at 1752 Bath Road. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on, we have nothing from committee of the whole. Information reports, just raise your hand if you have any questions as I read through them. Number one, strategic plan quarterly Number one, strategic plan quarterly report, Q2 2022. Number two, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of July 2022. Through crossing quarterly update, Q3 2022. Counselor Chappelle.
Yes, through you, Your Worship. Just a really quick question with regards to the delegated authority on page, that basically started in June 2020, a motion was passed with regards to a delegated authority, and I'm just wondering when that gets rescinded. It's page one, I can't read my own writing, I'm sorry it's late. Anyways, it dealt with the COVID delegations to the CAO and all the obligations, and I just wonder when does that come back to council to remove it? Because the way it's worded in the document is that it holds it up until we rescind it.
See a hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. I can't remember the exact date, but it was rescinded, I would say, well over a year ago. Counselor Chappelle, I think CAO had delegate authority maybe for a few months, so it was rescinded a very long time ago.
Thank you for the clarification. I didn't see that in the report, so I appreciate that. Okay.
Okay. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have three new motions. Number one, moved by Counsel Doherty, seconded by Counsel Osterhoff, that the resignation of Donald Mitchell from Heritage Kingston be received with regret. Number two, moved by Counsel Hill, seconded by Counsel McLaren, that is requested by Madeline Orr, Greensports Day Canada. Council proclaim October 6, 2022, as Greensports Day in Kingston. Number three, moved by Counsel Ossanik, seconded by Counsel Osterhoff, that is requested by John Kastig. Council proclaim September 25 to October 5, 2022, as Durga Puja in the City of Kingston. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We have no new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Mr. Deputy Clerk Cross for minutes, please.
Moved by Counsel Stroud, seconded by Counsel Doherty, that minutes of city council meeting number 20-2022 held Tuesday, September 6, 2022, be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Some number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Deputy Clerk Cross for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counsel Chappelle, seconded by Counsel Hutcheson, that bylaws two through 12 be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counsel Chappelle, seconded by Counsel Hutcheson, that bylaws three, four and seven through 12 be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counsel McLaren, seconded by Counsel Doherty. All those in favor? Opposed? And we're adjourned. Thanks very much.